Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Antioch City Council meeting of October the fourteenth, 2025. Mr. City Clerk, could we please get a roll call?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Torres Walker is excused. Councilmember Freitas.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson here. Mayor Protem Rocha.
Here.
Mayor Bernal.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum at seven fourteen P. M.
All right, thank you. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, will you please report out on closed session?
Yes. There was four, sorry. Yes, there was four items on closed session calendar for tonight. The first was, the first was conference with labor negotiators pursuant to California Government Code Section fifty-four-nine-fifty-seven-point-six. Direction was given to negotiators. There was no other reportable action. The second was conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to California Government Code Section fifty-four-nine-fifty-six-point-nine-sub-D-sub-one. Shimick Construction Co. versus City of Antioch. I apologize. No reporter, um, update was given to counsel, no other reportable action. The third was conference with, um, conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to California Government Code Section fifty-four-nine-fifty-six-point-nine-sub-D-sub-one. Antioch Adams Warehouse at All versus Walker. Once again, uh, update was given to counsel, no reportable action. And the final item was conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to California Government Code Section fifty-four-nine-fifty-six-point-nine-sub-D-sub-two. Three potential cases, uh, updates were given to counsel, and there was no reportable action.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to council agenda item number one, this is a continued item from our September twenty-third, 2025 council meeting.
Um, I, sorry, I, I apologize. Um, I did, I made a mistake with one of the items for closed session. It was, um, item three, the Antioch Adams Warehouse. I apologize. There was reportable action on that. Um, the council voted to authorize the city manager to execute judgment quieting title in that matter. Um, the motion was made by Councilmember Freitas, seconded by Councilmember Wilson, and the vote total was all four council members present voted yes on the matter.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to item number one, um, a continued agenda item from September twenty-third. Uh, this is a discussion item requesting input on an amendment to the ordinance number twenty-two-twelve-C-S that created the Antioch Police Oversight Commission. I'll turn this over to our city manager, Bessie Scott, or our.
Yes, I'll, um, turn it over to our Assistant City Attorney.
So, yes, a few weeks ago, as the council may recall, uh, there was a request to update the ordinance surrounding APOC, uh, just to kind of go with, uh, some of the situations that had come up in the past and to make sure that we're maintaining compliance with our, um, with our MOA with the U.S. Department of Justice to do, um, so to that end, uh, uh, city staff began working on an update to the ordinance. Uh, the update or some of the proposed ordinance terms were presented to APOC on, uh, in, uh, July seventh, um, at which point APOC was given the opportunity to give their update. There was also the chance for public comment at that meeting. To my, uh, to my understanding, there was no public comment that was kind of provided there, but there was an option for public comment at that time. Um, at that point, uh, city staff then took that and kind of formulated, um, some proposed changes, which, uh, we're going to go through the ideas with council tonight. And then, um, once we get council's feedback, we will then start drafting the language and, um, at a later time, we're going to, we're going to present the, um, proposed first draft of the ordinance, uh, with the actual language for council's approval at that time. Then, of course, we would have the second reading, and then thirty days after that, if the, if we go kind of, um, smoothly in that case, thirty days after that, the council will be approved, or the, not the council, the, um, the ordinance amendment would be approved. So, um, I will, uh, I will get started with that. So first, you know, this is just some background. In, um, 2020, the city council directed staff to research and recommend the establishment of a civilian oversight body for the Antioch Police Department. That led to the creation of this, um, of this ordinance, which established the Oversight Commission. The ordinance was passed in 2022, but, uh, the commission held its first meeting in, uh, March of last year. So, one of the proposed changes, um, that staff recommends, and this would be to kind of bring a little bit more clarity to, uh, APOC's role and be a bit more in line with the MOA, uh, which, uh, in part complements APOC acting kind of, uh, in a community outreach function. Uh, so there'd be a change to the language, which, um, the staff report should have included a, um, a copy of the ordinance, um, of the ordinance, or does include a copy of it, the ordinance in full. And so this is section four dash three-point-one-zero-two, which is on page two of the ordinance. Um, the recommendation is to change the language to read, "The police commission self shall facilitate community engagement and oversight by conducting community outreach, reviewing and recommending policies, procedures, so on and so forth." That part doesn't change. The bold the language is what is, what is being recommended to change, uh, particularly the community engagement portion, and then the, the conducting community outreach, because that wasn't really something that was, um, really, I believe that was something that was contemplated in the first place, and it was definitely something that was contemplated by, um, the MOA, but wasn't really clear in the language as it existed, um, or as it currently exists. This is just the continuation of the purpose statement. Uh, once again, there are no changes here. This is now, we're going to start getting into some of the more substantive changes of the, um, of the ordinance. The first would be to change subsection A to, uh, add that the chair, the mayor, and the city manager shall interview, um, shall interview the applicants, and then the applicants, um, and then the mayor would make a recommendation, uh, for, uh, a, uh, for a member of APOC. There is also, um, a suggestion that, that the council may want to consider adding a background process that would be in line with the background process that's used for normal city employees. That would, uh, that would mean, uh, fingerprinting that would go through the U.S. Department of Justice, and, uh, that could also include, uh, personal interviews or social media review. Uh, the reason why, the reason why staff is recommending that, just, uh, based off of some comments that were made, uh, regarding social media presence, uh, in the past when it came to the appointment of, uh, committee members. The, uh, the second would be to change subsection C of section, uh, four dash three-point-one-zero-three. There is a section in there where it talks about, uh, the steps that, or what council should focus on when appoint, when making appointments. Uh, this would just kind of clean that section up, um, because this is not a mandatory, um, a mandatory requirement, and it never was. This is just kind of a recommendation to council in the ordinance as to what should be considered. And, uh, there's also the recommendation to delete subsections, sorry, it says, um, one, three, and four, those should be subsections A, C, and D, from, uh, subsection E, which, um, uh, outlines the people who are not eligible to serve on APOC, and that would be to delete, um, to basically open it up to sworn, uh, peace officers, current, um, or former department sworn officers, or current, or, um, current or former employees or representatives, uh, who, or who are related to, um, peace officers. And kind of the, the rationale behind potentially opening things to, uh, people involved with law enforcement would be that, that could be a different perspective that's there on the committee. I believe that staff has, um, staff has seen that there are times where, uh, the commit, or where APOC could benefit from having some of that background insight that could help with some of the questions. So then, that would kind of be able to allow them to function a little bit, uh, a little bit easier in that respect. You know, they could talk to a commissioner about certain issues or certain questions instead of, um, it always having to take up staff time and resources. The next change recommended would be to subsection D of section four dash three-point-one-zero-four, which is, covers, uh, the removal of a commissioner from APOC. Uh, it, this would extend it so then it would make it so then a city manager, the mayor, or any member of the city council would have the authority to recommend the removal of a commissioner, which doesn't really exist at this point. Here, um, you know, there is the understanding that the commissioners serve at the pleasure of the city council, and the city council can, of course, remove one, but this would kind of give, uh, this will give another way for a recommendation to be made. It would also allow the city manager, um, the ability to make a recommendation to city council to, uh, remove a commissioner. And of course, we would still have the out, the guidelines there for the removal. Uh, when it comes to the guidelines for removal, there would be to, uh, in subsection D, to just remove the word unexcused from, uh, from that section. It has to do with unexcused absences. It, the current language is unexcused absences from at least three meetings in a one-year span. This would just change it to three absences in a one-year span. And, uh, change, um, uh, it would also add a section that, um, would change a violation of the APOC rules of decorum, um, and conduct to being a removable, um, a possible removable infraction as well. And with the, uh, with the rules of decorum, that, uh, is kind of a separate and discreet issue, so I won't be addressing that tonight. It can be brought up at a different time because it is, it would have to be a, a separate item that would, uh, be, uh, that would have to be discussed and, um, voted on by council. The next change would, is for section four dash three-point-one-zero-six, which covers meetings. Uh, currently, APOC is mandated to hold, generally, uh, has to hold two meetings per month. Of course, there's a, uh, there is kind of that period in July and December where there's only one meeting mandated per month, but this would change it, change the language to state at least one meeting per month and get rid of that July and December language because that would kind of get rid of the necessity for that. Um, and APOC would, of course, have the, uh, have the authority to hold more meetings if they so choose, where they could, of course, pass a resolution on their own, where if they want to continue to hold two meetings per month, they could, but this is, would just basically mean that they would not have to hold two meetings per month. And the power would still rest within APOC to, for the ultimate number of meetings that would be held. The next change would be section four dash three-point-one-zero-eight, which covers the budgeting for, uh, APOC. Uh, this would include a sentence that the funding will be incorporated into the city manager's bu- budget with specific allocation amount to be determined each budget cycle. That does not currently exist in the ordinance as it stands. Next is training, section four dash three-point-one-zero-nine. Um, this is another kind of a pretty big substantive change, uh, which would put more training in place for commissioners. One of the suggested requirements could be that, uh, commissioners complete a police ride-along within the first thirty days of appointment, and then participate in at least two ride-alongs annually thereafter. Uh, this could also be, you know, not just a ride-along, but some of the commissioners have also participated, and, uh, we call them sit-alongs, where they go and they sit with a dispatcher for a shift, and they get to see what happens there. Uh, another potential thing would be to have commissioners complete, uh, we have a use-of-force simulator, which, uh, brings up certain scenarios, uh, to have the, uh, to have the commissioners, uh, participate in that so they can see what it is. Uh, that could give them a bit more knowledge when it comes to some of their policy reviews, specifically when it comes to use-of-force, which is one of their major mandates in, um, in the ordinance. And also add, uh, requirement that all additional training requests would, uh, have to be required, would require, that, or that requires city funding, would have to be pre-authorized by the city manager. There was also, uh, suggestion to, uh, change, uh, some of the powers and duties of APOC. Uh, the first was under, uh, this is, uh, this would be, uh, section four dash three-point-one-one-zero. Subsection A, uh, basically outlines the policies that APOC generally reviews, and this would add personnel complaints to the list of policies. So this would not, uh, this wouldn't open up APOC to the ability to be involved with adjudicating personnel complaints. It would just kind of, uh, make it a priority for them to look at the personnel complaint policy along with the other five policies that they currently do. And, uh, we also believe that that would be in line with the MOA or the intent of the MOA. And, um, let me see, this section. Yes, uh, so subsection B has to do with, um, so the way APOC currently functions is that they will go through the policy, and they'll work with, uh, PD to see if they can come to a consensus as to what the policy should be. If they can come to a consensus, everything's great. The policy is then adopted. If there is no consensus, the way things currently stand is that if there's a disagreement, that disagreement is then brought before council, and council will then kind of, uh, make, uh, will peer discussion, take public comment, and then make a vote as to how they're going to direct, um, city staff to proceed at that point. This would just be, you know, uh, we could, this would be kind of reworking that process. To my knowledge, we haven't really had that situation arise. It's just that the language in there is currently somewhat cumbersome, so this, uh, there would be a change to that. Unfortunately, I don't really have exactly what that change would be yet. It would be in consultation with the police department, with city manager's office, and that would be, the actual language, um, would, uh, would be presented before council. And, of course, there would be clarification that, uh, nothing in this section would restrict the city council from independently initiating or inquiring about policy changes outside of the scope of APOC's authority. Because APOC, they do have the authority to look at all, um, police policies, but there is a clear focus on the ones that are particularly named in subsection A. And there would also be, there, we would also like some input on, uh, subsection D, which requires APOC to review, uh, the police department's budget every budget cycle. Um, I think that one of the issues that arose kind of through the current budget cycle that we were in, the city council had already given direction on the budget before we were able to bring it before APOC, just because of, uh, the way things were moving. So this would, um, if we could get some input as to how, um, in what way council would like, uh, APOC to be involved in the police department budget or budget review, that would be, uh, that would be very helpful. Another suggestion, this would be a new section that would be added to the ordinance, which would be a temporary pause on APOC, and this would be particularly a temporary pause initiated by the city council. There had, um, as you all may remember, there was, this was a kind of a big discussion that happened, um, a few months ago, as to whether or not the city council had, um, had any discretion as to whether they could request a pause or they could order a pause. And the advice given at the time is that city council did not have the authority to order a pause, but they could, they could request that APOC consider a pause. This would change the ordinance, and, um, in order to make sure that a, um, that the proper independence by the council is maintained, uh, we would recommend having, uh, certain limitations on how council could, um, mandate a pause, such as, you know, certain factors that would be, uh, that would be considered. Uh, and some suggestion would be the commission's effectiveness, compliance with legal obligations, budget constraints, shifting city priorities. There are other things which we would invite the council to discuss and give input on. And, uh, we would also recommend that the council, if the council were to, uh, were to decide to amend the ordinance, to have the power to, uh, mandate a pause, that the pause would be limited. The number that we have there is, um, there could be no more than three, the council, or the APOC could be suspended for no more than three months in any rolling twelve-month period. That would address some of the concerns with independence, so then, you know, there could, um, there could be no possibility that the council could say indefinitely pause APOC or anything like that. That would also kind of, um, address potential concerns with the MOA, because, uh, as is clear in the MOA and has been described to council, uh, APOC is considered a vital part of that agreement, and, um, the MOA was made with the clear intention of APOC being involved in the administration of that during the pendency of the, um, of the agreement, which would be, of course, at least two, but up to five years. And another, uh, section in here that we would recommend, of course, would be up to council, is, um, if council so wishes, the ability to pause APOC could rest exclusively with the council. Um, of course, APOC could, uh, make, maybe make a recommendation or suggestion to council that they pause if they wanted to do that, but the ultimate authority would be with the council. And at this point, I would open it up to public comment or any questions, but I just want to close by saying that, of course, uh, this is nothing that currently exists. These are all just recommendations that, uh, or recommendations or possible options that we are providing to council that they can consider, hopefully in a way to get the conversation started. Um, once we have council's input, and, uh, once we have council's input, then we'll be able to, uh, get to the, to the tough work of actually, you know what, writing the language to effectuate council's priorities, effectuate council's intent, and which we will then present to council, uh, at a later point.
All right, thank you very much. Um, do we have public comment on this item?
Yes, we currently have ten speakers for this item.
All right.
Susan Kennedy, Harry Thurston, followed by Frank Sterling.
... of councils. Um, my name is Susan Kennedy, and I am one of your APOC commissioners. And I know that the city council recognizes the critical role that this commission plays and supports the work that we are doing and has ahead of us. As you work to update this current ordinance, I respectfully request that you consider using the existing ordinance for boards and commissions as it relates to the administrative aspects of the commission, such as attendance. For example, chapter two dash five-point-two-oh-six specifically indicates that there is not more than three specific absences in a row, or more than twenty percent absences in a rolling years period, and, or twelve-month period. The exception is the Administrative Appeals Board. A person in violation of these standards also has the option to appeal to the mayor for an, for, for an exception or for relief if there are extenuating circumstances. Consistency in this area would make life easier for staff. To monitor attendance across all administrations, or commissions and administrations would be streamlined, and it simply makes sense. I would also urge caution when considering the addition of fingerprinting and a background check and a social media review. Since the ordinance currently states that no one shall be excluded from the police commission because he or she has a criminal record, the addition of such rigorous requirements potentially sends a message of exclusion rather than inclusion. And it also begs the question, why just APOC? A review of social media creates concern in the current climate of cancel culture. It seems to be everywhere we turn. If a social media review is implemented, what platforms will be chosen? There's a long list. Who will conduct the review, and whose opinion and perception of different posts and/or comments will be considered? Personally, I've been through fingerprinting and a background process as part of a municipal hiring process. That's not necessarily the case for everybody, and it can be daunting. Let's remember, we're asking people to volunteer their time to make their community better. Shouldn't we be looking for ways to make that more appealing? And I would also encourage you to seriously consider implementing any language related to a pause. I believe it's unnecessary. Thank you very much.
Harry Thurston, followed by Frank Sterling.
Good morning, City Council Mayor. I'm Harry Thurston, longtime, um, resident of Antioch. Have a couple suggestions on the, the approved changes to the ordinance, starting out right away with, uh, section four to, four dash three-one-oh-three, membership and appointment. Uh, the mixture, I'm gonna mention, again, the, the use of social media review, to me, seems to be a violation of the First Amendment. There's no need to look at that. You have lots of other opportunity to evaluate something. I think you should strike the social media review piece. Suggestion on amendments of the four, four dash three-dash-one-oh-three membership and appointment. Delete subsections, uh, section E, subsections, delete subsections A, C, and D. These are all police-related, uh, current appointment or past appointment. This is much like having the, uh, fox in the hen house. This is an Oversight Commission. We don't need police on the commission themselves. We can surf, ask questions. So I would recommend you do not do that deletion on the ordinance. The next one is, uh, four dash three-one-oh-four, Terms of Office and Removal from Office. You want to delete the word unexcused from absences. What about people that have a vacation and illness that eliminates, eliminates them, that makes them, uh, very much involved in this, um, being excused? The other is, um, on section, uh, the addition part, section and amendments. This is, this is where the city council has the right to, to, um, uh, suspend the, the, uh, at least, yeah, temporary pause the, uh, APOC. This is an encroachment of the political independence of APOC. Very, uh, the, the rules that you're going to use to suspend the, the, uh, activity is very subjective. And I would strongly recommend in duty, instead of doing that, if you have issues, uh, give those issues to the, to the city, uh, to the, um, APOC, um, uh, uh, to the APOC itself, and let them. go through and come up with recommendations to solve the concerns you have. And lastly, powers and duties. The discussion of the APOC to review, it's important the APOC has the ability to review the budget and present it to the public for this, so they know what is happening. That's the extent of my comments. Thank you very much.
After Frank Sterling, we'll have Hamish Lachlan, John Campbell, John Michael Prollett, then Devin Williams.
Hey, how y'all doing? I'm sad to know that I missed the, the APOC meeting, that they really talked about this. I had missed a couple in the past. I would like to comment then, but I think you're hearing it tonight. I agree with what folks have been saying, the social media thing, especially in the times we're living in, you're really going to look back at someone's social media. I think we kind of know where this is stemming from because of people's social media posts in the past, people had concerns and had called it out here in the chambers. Also, I'm also against the, the inclusion of people from the APOA or the Police Department. I mean, they're kind of the reason we're here already. They had the chance to police themselves, and they failed. So this is an independent body of oversight. This is not like the support group. The APOA and those guys, they have a voice, they have access. They can comment on policy and procedure and stuff. If, like, the folks already said, if they need an expert of an officer, they got the chief, they got the crew, they could bring in and ask people. So I would be against that one. And you guys ran out of pens. I didn't get to take a lot of my notes tonight that I wanted to take, but there was one other one. What was the one I want to talk about? The APOA, oh, yeah, well, I already did that one, the background check with the social media. Anyway, I'll have to leave it there because I didn't have my pen with me, but I want to make sure that you guys stay, the APOC stays independent. Oh, the pause, I also want to speak out about the pause on them. I do feel that that is a dangerous thing. Maybe it wouldn't be permanent or nothing, but it could be paused at a time they're doing critical work, maybe about to implement a policy or something like that. You never know when it could be pulled out, and how it could hamper them. And I'd just like them to be able to do their work, to be free, to make their suggestions to you. They're already only advisory, so everything they're going to do is going to have to come before you anyways. So can we just let them try to do it? I know we're getting our footing as commissioners and trying to learn, you know, what we can do. I know I've saved me, but what they can do, and what they're going to do for the community. And I just think we need to let them get their footing, and to be free and independent, and not be hampered by this. So, thank you.
Hamish Lachlan, John Campbell, John Michael Prollett.
Hamish Lachlan, John Campbell, Military Marine Engineering Officer, Royal Australian Navy, Special Forces, Volunteer Firefighter Medic. I speak French and Spanish also. I yield my time to Rikke Yaya Angels.
I'm sorry, the speaker cannot yield their time. Each speaker is allowed three minutes.
All right.
I'm also Class Zero operative for the Watch, formerly known as Anti-Narcotics Watch. We're a non-governmental organization, not funded by any government, worldwide. We had shipwreck cargo. We landed at Bethel Island, I believe, or Jersey Island. We were not permitted sufficient time to effect repairs on a fiber-class hull vessel that we had acquired for self-deportation purposes under the Alien Enemies Act.
Excuse me, sir?
Executive order from Donald J. Trump.
Excuse me, this is on the agenda item about the APOC? There's a, there's a place in the agenda for non-agendized items. If you'd like to speak then.
Recently, in Antioch and Brentwood, I'll just stick to one event, a Brentwood dispatch officer that we called regarding another act of misconduct by Brentwood officers, said, and we have it on record, so it's indisputable, unedited, raw footage, he said, "We need to know your location to be shooting the right person." We seek, oh, after that, I was assaulted by an undercover officer with a Glock IX at an AM/PM, again in Brentwood, but this is right on the, I don't know if you call it county lines, but right on the line.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
I believe the speakers are not on topic. They can certainly address us under public comments.
Police accountability, we're volunteers, so we don't get paid. And we seek to be confidential in performance.
Excuse me, sir?
With law enforcement at our expense. We have 400 videos in this particular area of police misconduct.
Sir, sir, excuse me. Yeah, thank you.
Sajer of property. When am I going to get back my property there?
Sir?
This is under public comments, but this is on APOC. Guess we're talking about APOC.
Yeah, that's the position that we're on.
Okay, so we're discussing.
Okay, sir, if, if you, if you guys could both... Thank you. All right, who's the next speaker?
John Michael Prollett. Devin Williams.
Devin Williams?
It's a really good one.
Sir? Sir, excuse me.
Sir, you can come back during public comments, but not this topic. You can come back at the right time, just not now. When, not, when the public comments comes up, you can come back up. Not now, is what you're, we're trying to tell you.
Devin Williams.
Good evening, City Council, staff and community. Devin Williams here, currently the Vice Chair of APOC. I was in the meeting where these changes were proposed, apparently, and I, it kind of went over my head, and there's some things I don't agree with, and I have to apologize to the community for approving some of these changes. I don't, I don't agree with most of them. In the meeting, I do remember talking about going down to one meeting a month versus having two, just for capacity reasons. We do a lot of work in our ad hocs that is behind the scenes, and I want to make sure that we have ample amount of time to report out. So two, two times a month meeting isn't the greatest. I don't agree with the pause. I know that we're in compliance with the DOJ, and I want to make sure that we can continue to do the work in having the, the council, we work at your pleasure, of course, but having a pause wouldn't really necessitate that work. Also, having officers on the commission, like some have said before, oversight over yourself isn't really how this should work, and we should remain independent and have community input. And so I just want to say, like, if, if y'all do want to amend some of the changes that are proposed, I would be a champion for that, to work with you. And again, I apologize for letting this slip through my, my fingers. And so that's what I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Mariana Moore, Angela Greer, or Angel Greer, Melissa Case.
Good evening. My name is Mariana Moore. I'm the Senior Director for the Ensuring Opportunity Campaign to End Poverty and Contra Costa. I'm not an Antioch resident, and I came here tonight anyway, many miles away. I've been following all of the, as many of us in the region and nationally have been following, the police violence and the aftereffects of that. I respect that the city has set up an APOC, an Oversight Committee or Commission. I came because I'm, want to echo and lift up what residents are saying so far tonight. The exact three issues that I want to raise up are the ones that other folks are speaking to. I think the background checks requirement is going to eliminate and intimidate so many very worthy residents, including those who are returning from incarceration and have a very important perspective to share. So this is not business as usual, you know, advisory bodies, this is a very important mission, given the struggles and the harm that's been caused over the last several years. So please reconsider that. As others have said, having law enforcement on an oversight body to oversee law enforcement, I, that literally left me speechless. I don't understand that one. I just, like, why would you do that when those, I'm not saying those that might be on the commission, but those with that badge on have caused so much harm in this city? Do not have the fox in the garden, the hen house, as one gentleman said. And then lastly, in terms of the pausing, I will say that the other hat I wear coming here is I was the chair, the founding chair of the Measure X Community Oversight, or Community Advisory Body, and the Board of Supervisors, which oversees the distribution of $120 million a year. Just recently, the Chair of our County Board of Supervisors took a lot of steps that are very unfortunate and underhanded to weaken that body. So I can tell you how the lived experience of me as the former Chair, feeling, and I resigned in protest because it was so egregious. And when I saw what y'all are trying to do here in Antioch, I'm like, I have to come speak about this. Y'all should have the strongest, most robust, independent body you could possibly construct, like, period, end of story. And anything that even is accidentally going to weaken it, put too much control, even in a well-meaning City Council's hands, that is not the move, y'all. The community's looking at you to rebuild trust, and this is not the way to rebuild trust. So please, I beg you to reconsider. I assume you're having good intent here, but please reconsider the weakening and the control and the other moves you're making right now with this body. Please do something different. Thank you.
Angel Greer.
The City Manager has asked for a break because of some computer glitches.
Okay, we will take a five-minute break to fix computer glitches.
For the record, the council will take a break at 7:57 PM.
All right, welcome back, everybody, from our break. We have our technical difficulties addressed. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Freitas.
President.
Councilmember Torres Walker is excused. Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rocha.
Here.
Mayor Bernal.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum at 8:04 PM.
All right, we will resume public comment on Agenda Item 1, about the APOC proposed amendments to the ordinance.
First of all, good evening, Mayor, City Council, and community. I want to begin by acknowledging the effort made by Antioch Police Department to begin addressing deeply rooted culture that, and for too long, has caused harm and distress among the residents. Steps forward, stepping forward, dismantling harmful systems are necessary and appreciated. However, we must remember that true change requires more than internal reform. It requires sustained accountability, transparency, community involvement. That's why this committee was created. It was formed by the city. People just like Kev, that just left out of here. It was formed by the residents of Antioch, people who were directly impacted by, and people who wanted and need a safe space to voice their own concerns without fear, and people who demand a structure that would hold the police accountable to the public that are sworn to serve. This committee is not an obstacle to progress, it is progress. Its mission is to bridge the gap between the police, the community. And we do this by listening to the residents elevating their experience and ensuring that the community voices are not just heard, but reflect in how we shape policies and enforce justice. Moving forward, it is an imperative that the city and its leadership continue to support the integrity and independence of this committee. We cannot lose sight of why it is formed in the first place. The serve is to serve the people of Antioch, to protect their rights and ensure their concerns are taken seriously. If we are truly committed to building a safer, more equitable Antioch, then the work of this committee must remain centered, respected, and empowered. I respectfully ask you to consider these areas and decisions as they are being made. Thank you.
I just want to say I've been in support of APOC this whole time, and I pay attention to every meeting, and I actually showed up to the meeting where this was discussed. And I have a few thoughts. My first thought is, APOC to me is a safety net, and they actually need a little bit more power, in my opinion, and I've stated this at APOC meetings, is when I see people come up to complain to APOC, and there's no follow-up, or doesn't seem to be a system to follow up, and I truly believe if you make any changes to strengthen this body, which I think you should, is that there should be a police liaison with APOC to make sure these people that have real complaints, there's a way to follow up as a safety net. We've seen in our community in the past, APD harass, stalk, assassinate people, and that needs to stop, and we can't have that again in Antioch. So I would like you to consider that as a little bit of a safety net for our community. As for background checks, I'm just gonna, Susan said it perfectly, we don't need council culture and dig up 10-year-old tweets or whatever. And on Item 4.3.104D5, they want to remove the Nicole wording. If you actually, I actually did look at Nicole before this, and the wording is very good on Nicole in regards to the conduct of the APOC committee, so, on standards. And so I think this, APOC should adhere to Nicole, and if anything, just add on, making the code of conduct stronger and complement Nicole standards. If you haven't looked at that, it's really easy to get to. I'm pretty much in agreement with the rest of, or I don't have any complaints about the rest of the things, but that's my comment on, oh, as far as APD officers on APOC, I'm not, if anyone should have background checks, it should be them. I think a police officer should, could add value, I could see them could adding value, but we don't need a corrupt police officer on APOC. So if they have a squeaky-clean record, I'm not against it. Thanks.
Mary Lutz, Sarah B., followed by Ralph A. Hernandez.
Mary Lutz. Good evening, Council and City Community Members. I want to speak about how regarding background checks and police oversight commission can make a city less inclusive, unintentionally reinforce racist and classist systems. When we rely on background checks, we are often filtering out people who have contact with the justice system, not just because they're unfit to serve, but because they've been overpoliced. We know that Black, Latino, and Indigenous communities are disproportionately arrested and convicted due to systemic bias, not because of higher crime rates. So when we exclude people based on records, we punish the very community So when we exclude people based on records, we punish the very communities that have experienced the most harm and whose voices are essential for real oversight. Background checks can also discriminate by class. They flag credit history, eviction, and financial struggles, things that reflect poverty, not character. That means that those with privilege and clean-paper records can be seen as trustworthy. The irony is, the best police oversight comes from people who have lived the experience, people who have seen and felt what it meant to interact with law enforcement. When we block them from the table, we silence the truth and weaken the public's trust. Instead of defaulting to background checks, we should value people's integrity, compassion, and commitment to justice. We should create pathways, not barriers, for those who have been directly impacted to serve. And we want an inclusive city. We want to keep using the same tools that exclude people in the first place. We don't want to use the same tools that exclude people in the first place. Real accountability means sharing power and not protecting it. Thank you.
Sarah B.? Take Ralph Hernandez.
Good evening, Ralph Hernandez. I wasn't going to speak on this, but there's some interesting things that have come up. I think right now, there is somewhat of a perception that the city is going to try to control APOC and what it does and what it comes out with. I think you need to guard against that as the decision-makers. You need to work with APOC. You need to work with the Police Department. As I've said before during public comments last two meetings, Antioch is unsafe, and it is dangerous. APOC needs to address that by also giving the ability, under your amendment, to look into the manpower shortages of our public safety personnel. I did mention that for 30 years. The city has not maintained the level of sworn police personnel that was adopted in the general plan. They, APOC, need to tell you, as well as the community, whether they're comfortable with that or not. If we are going to progress to a more positive city of Antioch and working with APOC, Justice Department, and the Police Department, we all need to work together. We cannot just continue to hide that Antioch has become increasingly unsafe, increasingly dangerous. Our businesses are suffering. Our population is suffering. I'll give you one factor. Antioch is looked at as a very dangerous community, even by the federal government. Right now, if you are living in Antioch, you have 1 in 24 chances of being victimized. Our crime index is 292 versus the national average of 100. That tells you a lot. You need to quit hiding that Antioch is unsafe and that it has become more dangerous. You guys, the decision-makers, you need to work with APOC, the Police Department, and you need to quit putting off public safety. It is a very serious factor that I do not see in the amendment that you are specifically addressing or allowing the APOC group to address to you. You should include that, that they come back and give you their analysis. Thank you.
The last speaker card we have is for Sarah B. After Sarah will be Nicole.
Hello. So this first section, I am speaking as a group of Reimagine Antioch. And I hope that the commission is not trying to compose, I'm sorry, I hope that the City Council is not trying to compose the commission with, like, what I would call blindly pro-law enforcement people, meaning that it will then be less likely to push for changes. And also, by adding Law Enforcement and the Antioch Police Officers Association to the oversight body, the administration gains a sympathetic voice inside the Police Oversight Commission, and that could definitely reduce the potential for release reform. I mean, I can only imagine, you know, I can think of at least two or three police officers who have violently harmed this community, who are still in positions, and I could just see them up there on the APOC commission. It's ludicrous, but it's also violent, scary. And so the goal of the Police Oversight Commission is to move towards non-discriminatory policing. If the body meant to monitor this change is staffed by individuals with direct professional ties to law enforcement, the community, especially the victims of discrimination, will view the oversight, the community and victims of discrimination will view the oversight as illegitimate, undermining the entire reform effort. Regarding ride-alongs, you know, at minimum, if you're going to make members participate, then have the members, you should also have the members be required to participate in a training held by victims of police abuse and receive training on best practices for police oversight. And then I want to speak mainly as an individual. I think it's really creepy to require that members of APOC go on ride-alongs, but, you know, I think about it like this. So you're required to work with the police when you're on the commission, so that's something you have to take into consideration. But I think there should be some kind of way to be able to say, you know, I don't feel safe or comfortable doing so, and being able to kind of work around that in a particular way. And also regarding pausing, I do feel like it's silencing. And for me, a lot of this is really about control. And I feel like, you know, ask yourself, like, as you've been, whether you're a City Council member, a City Manager, a mayor, whatever you've been, whatever hats you've worn in this city, have you looked the other way or failed to inform the public of police violence against the community, right? And then at this particular point, are you pursuing processes that will control the commission and ultimately harm the public? Or are you trying to work toward healing the community?
Nicole Gardner.
Just for, can I do a point of order real quick? Can I request a public records request here on the podium? Or do I have to do that through, like, face, like, or can I do that now?
Oh, you can actually do that now, yes.
Okay. So, yeah, I said point of order, so can I get my three minutes or no? I probably won't even use the three minutes. I think when I first heard about this, these amendments, the first thing that came to mind was, what back the blue? No wanting accountability for APD individual or persons came up with these recommendations. Just talking to folks, it seems as though APOC, they did have some recommendations. They, obviously, there's a couple of them here in the room tonight that did not agree with it. So I'm curious to also see if you all actually saw APOC's original recommendations that they gave to city staff. I am requesting a public records request because I want to know who came up with this? Who came up with all of these amendments? Because obviously, it's kind of different from what APOC was saying, right? And so I want to know, was it council members? Was it the mayor? What staff worked with this? Because it seems very one-sided. I can email you too, but I wanted to make that very clear, that that's exactly what we intend on doing. When it comes to the social media posts, and you mentioned that earlier, you, I don't know if you forgot, but even when social media posts came up and community members had concerns about that with one of the possible commissioners, like, some racist posts that the community felt that he made on his social media, Mayor, you still appointed him that same night. I mean, he was in the audience saying effing trolls, and you literally still appointed him that same night. So I think the social media posts, you know, what someone says on social media, once they get onto the commission, then we have the rules for them. We have the training for them and all of that. But I do not believe that that's something we need to do. As far as background checks and fingerprints, I personally believe that some of y'all probably wouldn't even be on council had that been what y'all needed to do, or even the commissioners that are already there, or any other commission. I'm just so furious, I'm like frustrated by, once again, this commission is having so much, why are we doing so much with this one commission? Are other commissions, do they have to have fingerprints, background checks? Are you checking their social media posts, all these different things? And lastly, I just want to say, this is so embarrassing, y'all. Antioch was on the map for racist tech scandal, for corruption within our police department, literally all over the country. And we are, y'all want to put, I don't want to say y'all, but the recommendation is to say it's okay to put APOA or Antioch Police Department on the commission? How much controversy does Antioch need? What is y'all doing? This is embarrassing. And I really just want to say, you know, when it comes to, also, I lastly want to say, please don't tell me, you know, when it comes to APD, whatever, y'all want to talk about the knowledge that they have. Again, other people have said, the commission can get that knowledge from our chief. They have AHAH committees, all different ways that they can get that. We don't need this. So please take that into consideration, and please take a note with my request. Thank you.
Eric.
Mayor, Council, Eric Haynes. Many of you know me. I'm not from Antioch. I'm from Concord. And I didn't take any notes. I haven't been following APOC, but it's absurd to think that you're going to have a Police Oversight Commission, and one of the requirements is going to be background checks and possibly letting police officers on it. You guys are, this, it's to repair the reputation of Antioch and the citizens and how they've been treated by the Police Department and the police officers. It's absolutely insane to think that you would cater to the suggestions to allow police officers to be the fox in the hen house. That's nuts. And background checks and fingerprinting, that's insane, absolutely insane. That's not doing anything to heal the city and what everybody's been put through. Seriously think about that. Seriously, listen to them. Those are the people that live here. I don't. I'm on the outside looking in. Crazy, absolutely crazy. Police Oversight Commission for a reason, to oversee the police. You want to do background checks? Do them on the police officers. You're going to find a lot of squeaky-clean ones because they cover everything up. I used to be back the blue, but the older I get, the wiser I get. And I respect police officers, the good ones. But it's obvious that the bad ones have been in control of this department and this city for way too long. This is your opportunity to do something good with it. Thank you.
We have never had a card for this. Andrew Becker would like to speak.
Thank you. So, listening to all the comments here tonight, seeing the feedback, seems that there's still a lot of hurt and distrust in the community. But we've also, over the last six months, 12 months, 18 months, watched the community build and grow, watched the city build and grow, and work towards a solution that works for all of us. And I think what's frustrating to me, as somebody who's lived here in this city for 26 years, is that we, as a community, every year will invest almost $100 million into our police department. But because of the distrust that we have, we no longer seem to want to invest our hearts. And that hurts me as a community member. We talk about, we don't trust a police officer up there alongside us. But then we call 911, and we want the person that responds to be of the utmost degree and morality. So how do we get there? I think every solution comes from dialogue. That's how you rebuild trust. If somebody hurts you, you're not going to go stand 26 miles away from each other and figure out how you're going to come back together. You're going to sit down together. And so I think that there is a middle ground. I think if you're saying you don't see a police officer as somebody that you can trust up there to make decisions or oversee a body of their peers, but then the rebuttal is that this person brings a certain level of technical knowledge or experience, well, then maybe this individual can operate in ex officio model, and they can be a member of the board, but they can have non-voting powers. If they're invested in their community, then they're not there to vote on a decision. They're there to be a part of the solution. And in all honesty, if you see this body as something that is going to bring this police department up to current standards and then exceed, you're also coming with solutions. So I think we need to stop talking about how much money we invest in our department, and I think we need to start investing ourselves into this department. I'm willing to be a part of that conversation. Thank you.
We have no other speakers to side him.
All right. Thank you very much. This is now before the Council for deliberation. Does Council have any questions of staff?
Well, Mr. Mayor, number one, this was not originated by the City Council. These are recommendations that have come before us. So my question for you tonight, do you want to go item by item? And City Attorney, you can clarify this for us. You know, if we go item by item and we indicate where we are, what is the next step?
The next step would be, once we receive direction from City Council, is that we will draft the language and then present the actual first draft to the City Council at an upcoming City Council meeting.
So that would also provide the community the opportunity, once they solve the final draft, to speak and raise issues or concern, right?
So they will get multiple, there will actually be multiple chances. So the way the procedure would go is, we have this particular meeting where we receive direction from Council. Then we'll have the first reading of the ordinance, which will be a public hearing, not just a discussion item, where, you know, there'll be an opponent, a proponent, and then five minutes for the public comment period for them to go through it. Then the Council will vote as to whether or not they want to accept the first draft or make amendments to that first draft. The Council could say, you know what, maybe there's just some minor changes we would like made. Make those changes and then present it back to us for the second reading. Or the Council could say, this isn't at all what we wanted, and send us back to the drawing board completely. Once decision's made there, and if Council is happy with the first draft or happy with the first draft with some minor amendments, then there'll be the second reading, which will be on consent, where the public would have the opportunity to pull it from the consent calendar if necessary or if they're required. Then it would go into effect. So there's multiple other opportunities for the public input in this process.
All right, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Wilson.
So a couple of questions. First, it's kind of weird that APOC is not presenting this and presenting their proposal. I think step one, we've already disenfranchised them by not letting them be the one to present what they felt was best. So this seems really weird and out of kilter for me. Can you explain that? And why are we not hearing, apparently, and I don't know, just somebody in their comments said there was another proposal. I'm not sure why we're not seeing the proposal that was, that APOC was.
I am not aware of any other proposal. There was, this was, the, so the city's proposal was presented to APOC at an APOC meeting. to APOC at an APOC meeting, where input was given, there was a chance for public comment at that meeting. That was done before here. The reason why this is coming before council is because based off of, uh, the meeting a while ago, there was discussion from council about wanting to amend the APOC ordinance. So this was act, actually at council's direction, to bring this forward, so then there could be an amendment on it. As for why APOC didn't bring it forward, it's because the city attorney's office is the one mandated by the city code to bring forward ordinance amendments, or any ordinance changes.
It just would have made sense to me to hear from, to hear from them, but I know council wants to go through these step by step. I was just, I was curious, because we had at least two APOC members come up and speak against it.
Excuse me, councilmember, could we please have the audience not, um, speaking out? Thank you.
So, yeah, two APOC members and one email from the current chair, disagreeing with this. So I'm just, it just seems like this is really off kilter.
And I would say, you know, it was a public meeting on July 7th, which is open for anybody to see. There was this discussion that was had. Also, you know, Chair Taylor was not there. Uh, city staff has met with Chair Taylor and also discussed this with her as well.
All right, I mean, we can go through, I know council wants to go through this one by one, it just, it's just weird. But, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Similar comment. I, I, um, first of all, we didn't recommend any of these, and some people have made comments as though this was created somehow by the five of us, or four of us that are sitting here. Um, I'm just telling you that, when I, when I hear the comments, and I'm seeing what's before us, these are recommendations that we're supposed to discuss and give some feedback. That's my understanding, there's nothing being pushed or promoted by, again, I think you were asked to not speak when we're talking?
Excuse me.
Nicole?
Nicole, please.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
Let me finish my statement, all right? So, what I'm saying is that we are here to listen and learn. I, too, was a little surprised, I was thinking when I first saw tonight's meeting, that members of the commission would be speaking to us and sharing their thoughts and feedback, whether we agreed with them or not. Whether, my questions would be, whether it supports our MOA with the DOJ, if it does or does not, is that why these are coming forward to us? So, I have questions, and I also have concerns, because it wasn't presented in the way I thought it was going to be, but that's just my misunderstanding. But we don't, I'm not coming in here tonight with any prior knowledge or information, I'm just looking at what's presented to me today, learn on why these recommendations came forward, and are any of them in, in alignment with the MOA? Is that why they're being presented? And, and then we just give our responses and feedback. But it seems like some people that have spoken in public comment are, have the misunderstanding that somehow we came up with these recommendations, or trying to move forward with it. In regard to us calling for this to come forward from the city attorney's comments, I don't rec, I don't recall that. What I recall was asking for APOC to present to us at some point, their organization, their commission, their feedback, where they started, where they're at, and where we are today. That's kind of what I was envisioning. Um, but here we are, and we have some discussion to take on these items before us, and we have some questions, but don't, I don't come in with any set agenda, or any, my mind's not made up on anything, I'm seeing it for the first time. So I just want to clarify that. I think that's kind of where councilmember, um, Wilson's coming from as well, is that when we are here looking at recommendations, and then we're getting emails from members of APOC that are in opposition, and we have members from APOC who come up to the podium and speaking in opposition, I don't know why there's not an alignment, or some kind of, that's all that I, I'm asking at this time. So, we'll address each of the points that were brought up tonight, and give our individual feedback, but I just wanted to clarify, this isn't something that we drafted or created. We're just here to review and give our thoughts about it as we move forward.
Mr. City Attorney? Excuse me, could we please have the audience not speak out while we're deliberating? Thank you. As far as the, what we're seeing here tonight, this was presented to APOC, correct?
Yes.
As a group?
Yes.
And was there consensus from APOC on these items that are coming back to us, as a, as a majority? As far as, did they, are they in agreement with this? Obviously, we've heard a couple of comments from folks tonight, but overall, were they in agreement with these items that you're bringing back?
There was feedback that was received, but at the time, there was nothing in there with a number of the items where they said, no, this is something we're not at all willing to agree to.
Okay.
And I do also, kind of, want to make sure that it's clear that nothing has been drafted, that these are, this was just kind of opening the discussion for council to give, to give feedback. If council says, council is also welcome to say, we don't want to amend the APOC ordinance at this time, and that will be the end of the, of the matter. Nothing has been made, the other, the ordinance is still in effect, the drafting hasn't even begun yet, this is just the discussion and recommendation phase.
All right, thank you. And I think this, this all originated, from my recollection, from the, uh, the item where the city council was, um, or was, was a request to put a pause on APOC, and it was indicated through the city attorney's offices that, that that wasn't legally permissible through our ordinance, and so there was a request, and I'll take credit for it, I guess, but there was a request to, to bring back, uh, an ordinance revision that would permit, uh, the council to make a pause to APOC. So that's, that's where it all originated. Obviously, there's more to it, it's been vetted through APOC, and council's going to go over it tonight and give our comments back to, uh, to the staff, so that we can decide if we're going to come back with a revision to the ordinance or, or not. So, if we could, if we could walk through this, um, one item at a time, starting with the purpose, uh, the purpose statement?
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't have any problem, the, the recommendation is to add the wording conducting public, community outreach, correct?
Yes.
I, I, that's fine.
Any, is there anybody else fine with that wording?
Engagement in community, uh, outreach, I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that, that, that's in the purpose statement, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, fine with that. Um, propose, uh, purpose continued, uh, encourage open communication, uh, police commission shall develop, review, and make policy recommendations.
I mean, there are no changes, correct?
There was no changes to that section.
Okay, that's fine. Next, 4-3.103, membership and appointment.
Mr. Mayor, number one, I think Commissioner Kennedy brought up, and there was another speaker, I apologize, um, that brought up a point that I think is important. And I know that, um, APOC is somewhat different, some of our boards and commissions, but frankly, I believe the standards for all of our boards and commissions should be consistent. And so if there's something that is specifically called out in the Federal Department of Justice agreement that pertains only to APOC, fine, but I didn't see that in this review. And so I am concerned of that we're treating this, um, commission differently from some of the other boards and commissions. With that being said, uh, it's, the recommendations, um, I, I'm, I'm completely opposed to the background check and the fingerprinting. I, I don't think it's appropriate in this commission, I don't think it's appropriate in any commission. The question is, if that was done, what do you do with it? And I think that innate prejudice and bias comes into the process, and frankly, I don't think it should be there. So for me, I would not embrace background checks and fingerprinting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A question I have, I feel the same way on this. Um, but the question is, is this related to the APOA, I mean, the, um, I'm sorry, the, the MOA, agreeing with DOJ, has anything to do with that?
No.
Okay. I was only thinking, questioning, because I thought maybe it might be part of the DOJ language, but if it's not there, I'm definitely not in favor. Do our other commissions require fingerprinting anyway?
No, I believe that this was kind of a recommendation just to address some, it's, what it seemed like maybe some concerns of council, but if council's saying that those aren't concerns, then, um, that's, as I said, this is nothing that's already been drafted, this is nothing that's already in effect. If council directs, we will leave that out.
Okay, so my, I'm in the same position as you, councilmember, I'm not in favor of that.
Yeah, please leave that out.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, on that, I'd like to address A. I think I expect to speak, because I was mayor for eight years. It says, add according to municipal code, blah, 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 that the chair, mayor, and city manager, manager shall interview the applicants and make a recommendation to the city council. For all of our boards and commissions, the, the mayor interviews, and the mayor nominates. There's only one power that the mayor has that is different from all city council members, and that is the power to nominate. Uh, when I was on there for eight years, I normally would pick the primary staff person, as well as the chairperson, if it, if you're interviewing, you know, and I think that really is a discretion that should be left to the mayor. I think most of the times you're going to have, in this case, our city manager is the staff, and so, um, but it's really your choice. And sometimes, you know, it may be best not to necessarily have a chairperson on the interview itself. So, from my perspective, I think we retain the status quo, the mayor interviews, the mayor nominates, and if you so decide who should be on the interviews, you, you make that, the mayor makes that decision.
I'm going to disagree a little bit. I do believe whoever the current chair should be, and I would say this across the board with all of our commissions, that the current chair at least sit in on the interview and have a voice into the decision-making process. You are there with this, you know, yourself, city manager, whoever the staff is. I just think whoever the current chair is should be in on those interviews. And that's me.
Mayor Protem, any?
I just believe we should be consistent in whatever practice we have, for one commission to be the same in all commissions. I don't think we should separate, oh, this particular commission differently than any other commission, and that's why I asked the question earlier about fingerprinting, or by any other differences between our commissions. So for me, I concur with, uh, councilmember Freitas, that the process that's in place at this time is the way that I think it should be upheld.
And I just, you know, I just want to point out one thing real fast, is just that with the, the passage of this ordinance, APOC was treated differently than the rest of the commissions, which is why this particular ordinance was drafted to include those different things. I can't speak to it beyond there, that was before my time working with the city, and I'm not sure exactly what, uh, kind of prompted that, I just wanted to point that out.
I just wanted to clarify with, with me wanting the chair on, I was saying that across the board, not only with APOC, but across the board and all the commissions, so I just want to clarify that point.
Okay. So, we're, we're dealing with this one tonight, and then we can bring consistency to the other ordinances, or the ordinance that, that governs the commissions. The, the, the current practice is that the chair, the mayor, and the city manager participate in the interviews of the APOC candidates. So I think that's the reason why this is in here and that, in that way. Uh, this is at, I do agree the chair should be in there, that's why we currently have that practice. In the case, our city manager is directly involved in the APOC meetings, um, providing staffing to those, and, and so I felt that it was better to have a balance of, of people in there with, with myself that could provide some additional input that I might miss, or whoever the mayor is. So, the wording with the chair, the mayor, and the city manager is fine for me.
And all I'm saying is, why not do that for all commissions?
That's right. I, I have a problem with this, you're handling this one different.
Well, I, I think.
Didn't I just make that suggestion for all?
Well, yeah, but that's not, that's not on the agenda, councilmember.
Right.
Wilson.
And, and so the re, the reason I think this, this is unique with the city manager is I don't think the city manager is necessarily going to be available to be in every single interview for a, um, commission. It's, it's, it takes a lot of time, if, depending on how many applicants we have. So, in this case, I think it's important, this is at a, at a high level, where the city manager should be engaged in this, and that's the reason I'm okay with this wording, but if council wants to do something different, let me know, and we can, we can go with.
I think you got two, too, I don't know.
And, uh, you know, it could be, uh, a recommendation could be, it could be city manager or designee. Um, I believe, uh, so I believe that the city manager only staffs APOC, and there are other commissions, but designees would staff those ones, so that, or direct, or directors staff those, which would be designees. Um, so that, that could be, that could be a wording in there that maybe would be, it would be city manager or designee.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think, I am persuaded by a lot of the comments that were made, designate excluding the chief of police, or any, any member of the police staff, for this particular, particular position.
Okay.
For, for some of the public comments that were made, that should be independent, and that's, that's my feeling, I mean, you may disagree, but I don't think, it's a city manager or designee, as long as nobody, it's not the chief of police, or any other member of the, the police staff.
Okay, so it'll be chair, mayor, and, um, city manager or designee. Consensus? Excluding the police chief or any police department staff?
And there's, uh, just to make sure it's verbal for the record, there's a consensus amongst, I see everybody nodding their head, but there's a consensus amongst the council?
Yes. And then also, I, there's consensus about removing the background process?
Yes, I have, I have that noted already.
Okay. Down to member, membership and appointment on the next slide.
Another question?
Yes.
City Attorney? This is 43-103, and the recommendation is to delete E subsection 1, 3, and 4.
Yes.
I'm looking at, it looks like E, A, B, C, D.
It should be, I apologize, it should be A, B, and D.
It should be A what?
A, so what, uh, what's on the, on the slide, um, on the slide, should, it should be subsections A, B, or D, not 1, 2, uh, not 1, 2, or 4. I apologize for that.
A, C, or D?
Isn't it A, C, or D?
Sorry. Long day, A, C, or D.
And wasn't the reason, I'm just speculating, I don't know for sure, but when I was reading through this, the, the 1 is replacing the A, because you have E, you would have E, E, if you had enough of those, and that would create some confusion?
Yeah, I think that, that might be, that could be what it is. Um, I.
It could be either way, I just, I think, E1, E2, E3, I think that was, it appeared to me that was the reason why.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, when it comes to these legal ordinances, as long as, as long as there is a distinction, like here, there's biggie and littleie, it would be clearer if we do 1, 2, 3.
Okay.
Uh, so that's something that, uh, that would be a housekeeping matter, that could be done with the, with the general cleanup.
So in the case of this one, what is council's on deleting subsection E1, which would be current sworn police officer, or his or her spouse?
Should be eliminated.
Should be eliminated?
For me.
So that would.
If you eliminate it, that means they're eligible.
Yes, it would, it would, it would make, so.
No, the following shall not be, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry, yeah, you're, yeah.
And I, I also just would like to state that this isn't something that's totally unprecedented. For example, in Seattle, on their police commission, they have two police officers. They have one, they have, uh, one police officer and one from police officer management, that have been appointed by the mayor to serve on that condition. And if you're, uh, as, if you or the public's not aware, Seattle just exited their consent decree recently that they had with the US government. So, this is something that isn't unprecedented, and something that has been endorsed by the USDOJ in the past.
So, E says the following shall not be eligible to serve, and so we are, would be excluding the sworn officer, or his or her spouse?
Yes. Um, so the, the only, the, so essentially, because B would still exist, which is current city employee, or his or her spouse, so no current Antioch police officers would be able to serve, because they're current city employees. But somebody who is a police officer outside of Antioch, who lives in Antioch, would be able to serve if, um, with the, if the recommendation is accepted.
Why don't we leave that one as is, the following shall not be eligible to serve, and just leave that?
That's, uh, once again, that was just a suggestion, as I said, based off of, you know, that other jurisdictions had had police officers on their, um, oversight commissions, that was something that we want to open up for discussion, but if council has no, um, if council doesn't want that to go forward, that doesn't have to go forward either.
I would not change anything.
Yeah, just leave that.
I wouldn't change anything in E.
Okay, there's consensus to leave, um, everything the same in E. All right. 4-3.104, terms of office and removal from office. Uh, D4, which would be, I guess DD, removes, would take unexcused absences.
Well, the first, sorry, there's.
The first one, D?
Oh, add city manager.
Yeah, just, just D. Would, that would, that would give the city manager, um, the city manager or individual city council members the, uh, the power to recommend removal. City council already has the power to recommend removal, but this would also give the city manager the power to recommend removal. This, uh, I think the impetus behind this one was just that, you know, the city council has, the city council does staff the meetings, meets with the, with the chair, um, and, and city staff, and has a bit more insight than the council may have as to the going ons of the commission. Another issue that came up at a meeting was that some commissioners were upset with the fact that they had to recommend the removal of members. They felt that it wasn't fair to them for the ordinance to be on them, so it would also give city staff kind of a way to get in there, if city staff was. so it would also give city staff kind of a way to get in there if city staff was noticing issues. There is also other things where, you know, city staff may be aware of certain, there could be other external outside issues that could maybe warrant the removal of a commissioner.
So, so the recommendation or the wording would be, the police commission, the city manager, the mayor, or the city council may recommend to the city council that a member be removed?
Yes.
Correct? So do we have a consensus that those additions are okay? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, all right, so those additions are fine. Moving on to four, which is D, deleting the word unexcused, so it would just say absences from at least three meetings in one year's span of time.
And that would be more consistent with other boards and commissions, is that correct?
The language, the general language says, just says absences, it doesn't specify unexcused.
I agree deleting excuse.
We agree? All right, consensus to remove excused, the word excused, delete the word. Change to violation of APOC rules of decorum and conduct policy.
Mr. Mayor, do we, does, does APOC have rules of decorum and code of conduct?
Currently, currently, there is nothing that's been finalized. There's a, there's a currently a working draft on it that has not been fully reviewed by the city attorney's office, will be fully reviewed by the city attorney's office, and then will be presented to council at a, at a future date.
Mr. Mayor, can I suggest that when that happens, we go back and visit this?
Sure.
I mean, I don't want to make a decision on something I haven't seen.
And is, and is the recommendation then to remove NAQ and replace it with, with the APOC rules of decorum?
Yes, I believe that the reason why that recommendation is made is just so then there's consistent things. I believe that the, the rules of conduct were kind of based off of the NAQ rules of conduct, with maybe some other Antioch-specific matters in there, but it would just be, so then, it would kind of clean up how somebody can be removed and have it kind of specific to the city.
And then, hopefully, this would be the same for all the commissions and the city council, I would hope. We could all adopt this.
Yes, I believe that, you know, it's my understanding that the intent is to have a, a kind of a blanket rules of decorum for all, for the city council and for any commissions that function at the will of the city council. That would be uniform across the board.
And has this, has a rules of decorum and conduct been presented to APOC already? Have they seen a draft of this?
You know, I was not present when this was, there may have been a draft that was presented, but as I said, that draft hasn't been vetted by the city attorney's office. It would be something, I've seen the draft, and there are some issues that would have to be addressed before it goes before council.
Could I get council's consensus that that move forward sooner than later? Move forward quickly to get those rules of decorum reviewed by the city attorney's office?
But he still needs to present it.
I think he's, I think he's, aren't you reviewing the draft of the rules of decorum currently?
I, so I have, I have looked at them, I've read them, and I identified some things that were, I thought were legal issues. So, I haven't, I have not had the chance to go through and actually, you know, do a full legal analysis of it, but at council's direction, I can fast-track that if that is a priority.
Well, I think, I think it's important, if we're going to get rid of the NAQ rules, we have to have something in, in place there, or I would like to see something in place.
Yeah, let him, let him work on it, but I mean, you bring it back and you bring the NAQ with, so we can kind of do a compare?
That I can do.
All right, thank you.
And so, we're just, we're holding?
We're gonna hold on that one. All right, four dash three point one oh six, meetings. Change to at least once each month and delete July and December language.
Fine, all right.
Yeah, I'm fine, we're fine with that. Four dash three point one oh eight, budget, include a sentence that the funding will be incorporated into the city manager's budget with a specific allocation amount determined during each budget cycle.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Why wouldn't it be in the police budget?
Oh, well, that could be a conflict of interest, but it's already in my budget, so it's just chewing it up in the ordinance.
Got it, okay.
All right, are we fine with that?
Fine with that.
Yes, all right, we're fine with that. Training, add a requirement, each commissioner completed, complete a ride-along within the first thirty days and participate in at least two ride-alongs annually, are we okay with that?
I just wonder about if it should be optional, only because there was some concerns raised on requiring that of someone who may have had a negative experience, who is serving on the commission as a volunteer, it's a voluntary thing. That would be my only thoughts.
On that, you know, I, they are the police commission, and I think they should go on ride-alongs. I think they should see how dispatch works, but I, I am sensitive to the issue and maybe insert language that, you know, an individual could specifically request to be excluded from that. I would say thirty days is very ambitious. Sometimes, you know, we're gonna have two, three members, and if they get appointed in November and December, let's face it, that's never gonna happen. So I would suggest instead of thirty days, ninety days.
Is ninety days fine with the rest of council?
Yeah, ninety days is fine.
Ninety days to do a ride-along with the ability to have an exception if there's a problem for an individual?
Yeah, and I was also going to include certain exceptions because there could be, there could be certain commissioners who have some type of, maybe some infirmity or disability that would prevent them from being able to participate in a ride-along because, you know, police cars don't have a whole lot of room in them.
Why don't you include language, ride-along, or sit in, I'm sorry, dispatch, or if there's something that-
That can also, I can, I'm also happy to draft something that has some, maybe some alternatives that are in there, like saying, could be ride-alongs, could be sit-alongs with dispatch or some other activity that's there.
That's right. The issue is exception.
Yeah.
That we have to honor exception, and I assume the exception would be approved by the city manager? Okay.
I think they could send it to the chair and CC, the city attorney or city manager. We can put the language in.
This, the second item in this would be that the commissioners must complete use-of-force simulator training within the ninety days of appointment.
That's fine.
Is that reasonable?
I think it's reasonable.
And then, the final on this page is, or slide is, add a requirement that all training requests requiring city funding must be pre-authorized by city manager?
Yep.
Yes, all right.
And just to be clear, just, the exception language would also be added to the use-of-force simulator, just so it stays consistent.
Yeah.
Okay, under four dash three point one ten, powers and duties, add personnel complaints to the list of policies.
I, I need to understand that, this item particularly.
Yeah, so, you know, under this section, subsection A, kind of outlines, I believe it's either five or six policies that the commission is kind of a must focus on, which are currently, yeah, First Amendment assemblies, use-of-force, canines, de-escalation techniques, hate crimes, and bias-based policing. This would just, basically, it would add, one of the policies that they would have to go over would be personnel complaints. That is one of the things that I think that APOC is very, very interested in, just a policy of, that the department has for accepting complaints, going through them, how YAs are supposed to be conducted. That was also a major focus of the US DOJ MOA as well, because a lot of the use of force arguably could have, there were investigations that were done that may not have been up to snuff with policies or whatever, so I think that was one of the big, one of the big policies that US DOJ and actually even Cal DOJ has been really interested in.
So you're talking about the process?
Yes, the process.
Because as it's written, I, I think you're opening up a Pandora's box. So if you insert process, sure.
Yes, and this would, this would be focused just on their review of the policies, not, there are, and this is-
Policies and process, I don't care, but I think the current, you know, speaking from a previous HR perspective, I, I have grave concerns about this.
And, you know, myself, along with actually our consultant, we've had discussions with APOC, just with the APOC ad hoc that was looking at this, to discuss that matter with them and explain the city's position and the concerns that we had. So, the consensus was, it would just be the policy for personnel complaints, not actual involvement.
That's fine.
Yeah, it says policies and procedures, so is the council okay with that, adding personnel complaints? Yes, okay, we're adding that. Powers and duties. Work with city attorney to clarify the process for recommending changes to the specified policies. If APOC and the department agrees on the proposed changes, police chief shall amend. If APOC and the department disagree, the proposed changes shall be forwarded to the city council for final approval or rejection. Is that, is that okay with-
It's not for me, because I think the city council needs to be aware of the recommendations, you know, on a constant basis, because this is, work with the city attorney to clarify the process for recommending changes to the specified policies. And if APOC and the department agrees on the proposed changes, the police chief will amend. Somehow, some way, I, I think the city council needs to be aware that amendments are taking place.
I, I think the question is, if APOC and the police department disagree, who's, who's going to make the final decision on, on?
No, this is if they do agree.
No, it gives both.
It gives both.
It gives both, and my, my problem was the first part.
Okay, okay.
I don't have, I mean, the second part is fine, it comes to the city council, but this says if APOC and the department agrees on the proposed changes, the police chief shall amend the policy accordingly.
Right, so if APOC, if there's a disagreement, then it comes to council?
And I'm saying, even if there's agreement-
You want both.
I think the city council, because, I mean, we have a fiduciary responsibility, and I would hate that this, some of these things happen, and we're not aware of it. That's not right.
Yeah, I believe you're saying in either case.
Yeah, in our case, the city, it needs to come to the city council.
Quick question, how often are we gonna have things coming to the city council when it comes to this, this item, or how often do we have it coming?
I'm, I'm gonna call the chief down, only because we're, we have different litigation, we have different mandates to change certain policies, we can't always discuss them in public.
Okay.
And the chief will determine what operations happen based on best practices. So there's lots of levels to that that wouldn't always come to council.
Yeah, depending on the policy that we're looking at, laws go into effect multiple times throughout the year. In essence, we're always updating the policy manual. If I were to make a recommendation, it would be to focus on the policies that are outlined in the city ordinance.
Do we come back to city council?
If that's what, if that's the pleasure of the council, yes.
I mean, you would bring these to APOC and its public media anyway. I don't understand why-
Not necessarily, because the working group doesn't meet in public.
Pardon?
The working group does not meet in public over the policy review. It's the ad hoc.
Okay. And so, they're meeting in private, changes may occur, in private, is what you're recommending. I have a problem with that. I don't think that's appropriate, because, I mean, as many of the speakers said, transparency is very important, and I think if there are changes, the council needs to be aware.
Yeah, like I said, it's the pleasure of the council. If you would like to see it, I don't have a problem with that.
I don't understand why you wouldn't do that.
Well, I, I think one of the things is that, as the chief said, so the policy manual is how many pages?
Over a thousand.
Yes, and so, and it's being constantly updated to keep in line with a state law. There's, there's kind of standard routine updates. Then, right now, it's, we're kind of in the reform period, so there's more substantial updates being made. I think that if council, I'm sure if council wanted to be, want to be kept apprised of every single update, that could be there, but that may not be a great use of council time, because of the, at least, the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, because of the volume of updates that are happening and the frequency at which they occur.
Correct, and the ordinance and the agreement is very specific on the policies that require their involvement. It is not all one thousand pages of the policy manual. It's very specific.
Let me suggest a compromise, annually, you'll report to the council, and you can just give it to us in a form.
Yeah.
And so, if, if the staff is concerned that we get too many of these, but at least annually, I think there has to be some information to the city council. You're right, we go, if you're doing it and there's ten or fifteen changes a month, we'd go crazy. But if you give it to us once a year, we see it, we read it, that's fine.
Yeah, like, if that's the pleasure of the council, I have no problem doing that.
That would be my recommendation.
Okay, so once a year, we would have an update on the policy changes?
Sure.
All right.
And just the entire policy manual?
Whatever, whatever this says, powers and duties. It says, work with the city attorney to clarify process for recommending changes. So whatever those policies are, that's, that's-
Well, it says changes to the specified policies, which would be the-
Yeah, I get, I did-
So we're asking if you want us to bring the entire, or you want it just to bring up?
Specify.
Okay, all right.
If the, the word that's causing indigestion is, you know, specified, yes, specify.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Consensus on that?
Yes.
All right, consensus on that. And then, the statement, nothing in this section restricts the city council from independently initiating or inquiring about policy changes outside the scope of APOC's authority. It's fine.
And that, that's kind of language, it exists already, it's just to make sure it's actually codified in our ordinance.
Okay. Powers and duties, item D, discussion of the requirement for APOC to review the proposed budget and conduct at least one public hearing. So do we, do we want APOC to review the budget and hold a public hearing?
Sure.
Yes?
So, the, the current language is, one of the things that APOC does is, review city council's proposed budget, advise whether budgetary allocations for the police department are aligned with the police department's policies and procedures, and the police, the police commission shall conduct at least one public hearing on the budget, per budget cycle, and shall forward to the city council any recommendations for change. Do we want to keep that language the same, or is there any changes that we want to make there?
You don't want to change it? You want to keep it the same? Okay, keep it the same. Temporary pause of APOC, this is an additional item. City council has the authority to temporarily pause APOC. It may only be approved by the majority vote of the city council, will be based on factors including, but not limited to, commissioners effectiveness, compliance with legal obligations, budget constraints, or shifts in city priorities. Temporary suspension cannot exceed three months within a rolling twelve-month, twelve-month period. And so, on that item, are we in agreement that the city council has the authority to pause APOC?
Well, I, just, Mr. Mayor, my recollection was that there wasn't enough members to be able to conduct a quorum and move forward with any action. So my, my, what I recall was a request to pause until such time we could get the, the additional commissioners added to, so that they would have the ability to hold a quorum and to make decisions, because otherwise, they could meet, but there wouldn't be any business to begin. That was my recollection of what happened.
If I can make a brief correction? So there wasn't enough for a quorum, there was four, there was four members.
Okay.
But if any one member didn't show up, then they didn't have a quorum, that was the issue. We had a couple of meetings where we only had four commissioners, three would show up, so they couldn't, they couldn't have a meeting, so that was-
Right, so what I was raising was, I think the reason why it was brought up from, whether it was the mayor or the council, was because of the situation where unless all four people were there, they couldn't conduct a decision on any, to take any action. And at the same time, we already had applications for commissioners to be added to the body. And so therefore, I think the question was, could we pause until the membership was increased by two or three, so then that we could then have action taken with the full body? And I think that was the reason, my recollection of what came up, and that's why I was okay with it. But then we found out that APOC operated under a different set of agreements, and that was when we then looked at, what does that mean and how do we do it? So for me, under special circumstances, I thought it was appropriate. I don't know about just generally in saying we want to pause, so I think that's just my point of view on what took place previously.
And my, my thought originally was, the council is the one that authorizes the APOC through the ordinance, and therefore, the council should have the authority to pause it. So that was just the underlying premise for the original, started this whole thing off, so.
I would be careful with this, because this is a slippery slope right here. I would understand if council needed to step in extreme circumstance, such as there not being a quorum or something extreme. I don't want this to be here where at any moment we can go, okay, we want to pause them, for no reason whatsoever. There has to, for me, there has to be an extreme circumstance and a very valid reasoning, and if it does come before, it says majority vote, I would like to see that, four fifths vote, if it came back to council, on pausing, not only- On pausing not only APOC, but any commission? But that's just, that's why, because this, this seems like a really slippery slope that can lead into some big messes.
And one thing I will note is that there is, there is currently no language that gives the authority, or gives council the authority to pause any commission, it's not just APOC, it would be any commission. So if we, if they were to be extended, kind of the same thing with the rules of decorum and some of the other issues that we discussed tonight. If it were to be extended to the other councils, or the, sorry, the other commissions, that would have to come back as another item for, so this would just be discussing a pause for APOC. And if we wanted to extend that to other, to other commissions, that would have to come back as another, as another item to another amendment, or to amend a different section of the municipal code.
Mr. Mayor, ultimately, the city council has the choice of pausing or not pausing. I do think it has to be true for all boards and commissions, not just APOC. And, and so, I know some people have conspiracy theories that the city council, future city councils are going to, you know, start pausing and try to, to, you know, destroy APOC. I doubt that will ever happen, particularly with some of the audience we have here today. I just don't think publicly it would work. And frankly, the power rests with the city council. I think it should rest with the city council, but be applied to all boards and commissions.
Okay.
Yes, I agree, applies to all boards and commission, but if council's going to vote on it, I would say instead of a majority vote, four fifths.
No. We don't, we don't have four fifths on anything else.
I think it should be consistent across all commissions. If we're going to do it, it's all commissions and it's majority vote. We don't change anything specifically for one commission over the others. So it's either one way or the other. It's just all the way across or don't do it at all.
All right, so I think, I think it should be consistent across all commissions, majority vote.
Do we have a majority consensus on that?
I think we have a majority of three.
Yes.
Okay.
And then it says APOC does not have the authority to pause without city council authorization. Do we agree with that? Yes, okay, consensus on that. So that takes us through the, through the list. So thank you, thank you, city attorney and city manager for all the hard work and for everybody who came to give your comments on this. And this is not, this is not over, this is just getting started, so we'll be, we'll have another look at this.
I have just one follow-up question. When it comes to, I believe council member Wilson addressed kind of conditions for the pause. How would you like, how would you like me to proceed on that? Do you want me to suggest some possible conditions, or does the council have some conditions that they would like to see in there?
Suggest some conditions.
I think that's the slippery slope. You know, I would leave it open, and, you know, because times change, considerations change, issues change. If you want to put EG and have two or three examples, sure, okay.
I can, I can draft some language that I feel, and then the city council can decide what they would like to do with it.
Mr. Mayor, I do want to make one public comment.
Yes.
A lot of people did speak tonight, and I think at the end of this, you influenced a lot of the decision-making that actually happened tonight. And so I would suggest when it does come back in a public hearing, that you continue participating because I think a lot of the suggestions were very good. And I, as one council member, I was appreciative. Thank you.
All right, any other comments on this? All right, thank you very much.
Mayor, I know this is only one item of the agenda, but could we please take a 10-minute break?
Well, my.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, my request was going to be, if we could suspend the rules to move item two to the next item because we have some proclamations to present, and there are some people that are here that have been waiting for quite a while.
That is.
And I know one of them has a child that's here as well, that, so I was just hoping.
Do we have a, do we have a second to suspend the rules to move item number?
Second.
To, all right, we have a motion and a second, please catch your vote.
Thank you, the motion passes unanimously.
Four oh, right?
Four oh.
Yes, all right, so moving on to item number two, proclamations. We are going to start with National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2025.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to approve all three of the proclamations?
Yes, we have a motion, I'm sorry, we have a motion and a second, please catch your votes.
That's next.
All right.
Thank you, the motion passes unanimously with the attending council members.
All right, so moving on to our proclamations. We have national, first one is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2025. Whereas October is annually recognized as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, whereas there is a need to provide education, awareness, and understanding of domestic violence and its causes. Whereas domestic violence programs in California provide essential life-saving services for survivors, their children, and communities. Whereas domestic violence affects all people of all genders, sexual orientations, ages, racial, ethnic, cultural, social, religious, and economic groups in the United States and here in Antioch, California. Whereas the marginalization of certain groups in society, including undocumented individuals, transgender individuals, and people living with disabilities increases their vulnerability to domestic violence. Whereas children exposed to domestic violence can experience long-term consequences, including difficulty at school, substance abuse, behavioral problems in adolescents, and serious adult health problems. Whereas domestic violence is the third-leading cause of homelessness among families in the United States. Whereas all communities deserve access to culturally responsive prevention programs and initiatives to improve overall community health and safety by challenging the societal norms that perpetuate violence. Whereas recognizing the need to understand the complexity of violence as perpetrated, perpetrated, perpetrated within communities and against communities, and the fear of many survivors to report to law enforcement. And whereas the City of Antioch's Public Safety and Community Resources Department will host, will host its third domestic violence awareness event on October 25th, 2025. Now therefore, I Ron Brunel, mayor of the City of Antioch, hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 and each following October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Antioch. May I please have Emmeline Burke and Eduardo Herrera, are you both here tonight? All right, thank you very much. They're from the Family Justice Center, and they are going to be receiving this reward on behalf of the community.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, I know it's been a long evening. My name's Emmeline Burks. Oh, are we better, okay. My name's Emmeline Burks, we are from the Family Justice Center. I am a Beyond Violence Intervention Specialist.
My name's Eduardo Herrera from the Family Justice Center, Beyond Violence Intervention Specialist with the Family Justice Center.
We serve those that have been victims of domestic violence, sexual abuse, human trafficking, here in the City of Antioch. On behalf of the Family Justice Center, we want to thank you for this beautiful recognition and for shining a light on domestic violence awareness, for recognizing the work being done across the community. At the Family Justice Center, we know that violence takes all of us. Advocates, partners, neighbors, and leaders, standing together with empathy and purpose. This proclamation honors every survivor's voice. It represents hope and unity. It reminds us that when a community chooses compassion over silence, we make space for healing, justice, and lasting change. Thank you for standing with survivors and for standing with us as we accept this in solidarity with every survivor that has taken the first step towards safety and healing, because it certainly is not easy. For those survivors that do come to us, those, we want you to know, you are seen, you are heard, you are not alone. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. The city council will come down after the other two proclamations and give you your proclamation, thank you. All right, our second proclamation is for Filipino-American History Month, October 2025. Whereas October 1992 was the first time Filipino-American History Month was celebrated in the United States. In 2009, US Congress declared October as Filipino-American History Month, and in 2015, President Obama celebrated the first Filipino-American History Month at the White House. Whereas understanding the history of Filipino people in the United States is an important part of celebrating Filipino-American History Month. Whereas the first recorded presence of Filipinos in the continental United States occurred on October 18th, 1587, when Luzones Indios came ashore from the Spanish galleon Nuestra Señora de Esperanza and landed at what is now Morro Bay, California. Whereas Filipino-Americans are the second-largest Asian-American group in the nation and the third-largest ethnic group in California. Whereas Filipino-American History Month is an opportunity to highlight the economic, cultural, social, and other notable contributions Filipino-Americans have made countless, have made in countless ways toward the development of the United States' history. Whereas the contributions of Filipino-Americans have enhanced the freedom and prosperity America continues to enjoy today. Whereas the customs and traditions of Filipino-Americans are respected and celebrated as part of the rich history of our city, state, and nation. And whereas the late Peter Aquino Aduja of Hawaii became the first Filipino-American elected to public office, and the late Thelma Garcia Bookto of Alaska became the first Filipina-American elected to a legislature in the United States, respectively inspiring fellow Filipino-Americans to pursue public service in politics and government. Now therefore, I Ron Brunel, mayor of the City of Antioch, hereby proclaim that October 25th is Filipino-American History Month in the City of Antioch. I'd like to invite Vaughn Salvador and his son Vincent to come on up and receive this if they're here. Welcome Vaughn and Vincent. You can go on up and say a few words if you'd like, please.
Just say thank you. Oh, just say thank you.
All right. You want to say anything, Vincent? Okay. All right, thank you. They're the strong, the strong silent type. So we have National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 2025. Whereas October is nationally recognized as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and aims to raise awareness and to educate about breast health and breast cancer, which is a leading cause of death in women in the United States. Whereas October is also the month that recognizes the many survivors, those living with metastatic breast cancer, their supporters and loved ones, and honors those lives lost to the disease. Whereas the history of Breast Cancer Awareness Month began in 1985 as a week-long awareness campaign by the American Cancer Society, and eventually extended to a month-long event, and the pink ribbon came into play in 1992. Whereas the month of October aims to promote screening and reduce the risk of, of the disease, which affects 2.3 million women worldwide. For these women, the impact of breast cancer extends well beyond the single month of awareness. Whereas breast cancer affects men too. In 2021, October 17th to October 23rd was designated as Men's Breast Cancer Awareness Week. According to American Cancer Society, about 2,800 men in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer in 2025. But lack of awareness and stigma can be barriers to detection and care in men, trans men, and binary people, and whereas this, and non-binary people, and whereas this October, we want to make Breast Cancer Awareness Month more than just about awareness. This October, we encourage more involvement to get screened and to take action since early detection of breast cancer is often key to successful outcome. Now therefore, I Ron Brunel, mayor of the City of Antioch, hereby proclaim that October 2025 is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And if I could please have Kristin Vestali, and if she'd like her family to come on down and receive this.
Hi, good evening, thank you very much, Mayor Brunel and the council. Today, actually, three years ago today, I did receive my phone call that I had breast cancer. So to be recognized today on that was special for me, so I appreciate that. There are so many of us that have cancer, know someone that does. Early detection is key, listen to your body. And more and more people are getting cancer earlier and earlier in life. So again, it's important, like for my daughter here, to, you know, make sure that she understands what that's all about because it can be hereditary, and it's important to be aware and be educated. But I can't believe that it's been three years since I've been diagnosed, and yet it seems so long ago, but yet it seems like yesterday. So a lot has gone on, a lot has transpired, but I, with the help of my family, friends, and our wonderful community here that we have in Antioch, and all of East County that have supported me, and support so many others with breast cancer and with other cancers too, we thank you so much from our hearts, we really do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, the city council will head on down, we'll take some pictures.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any public item on this comment? Or any public, any public comment on this item?
Any public comment?
Any public comments on this item?
Thank you so much.
It's on the proclamation, it's on proclamations, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So with regard to the breast cancer, my dear friend Thelma here wanted me to remind everyone that I'm hosting, along with the Steep and Time in Brentwood, we're doing on Saturday, we're doing a breast cancer fundraiser. So we do have some seats available at 1:00 at Steep and Time in Brentwood, the tickets are $65. And Jude, who owns the proprietorship, is going to be donating money back to breast cancer, so I thank him for that. So if you want to join us, come to the tea party.
Come spill the tea all to make sure we protect our tatas.
Tea for tatas, there you go.
All right, thank you, any other public comment?
We have no other.
Okay, no other public comment, we will take a 10-minute recess till 9:00. We will take a 10-minute recess till 9:40. We'll come back.
The council is taking a recess at 9:31 PM.
All right, welcome back, everybody. We're going to get the meeting back started up again from our recess. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Councilmember Freitas.
Present.
Councilmember Torres Walker is absent. Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rocha.
Here.
Mayor Burnell.
Here.
Thank you, you have a quorum.
All right, next on our agenda is public comments. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, we'll go with John Michael Prolet, followed by Hamish Lachlan John Campbell and Jim Lantner.
All right, so we're the Watch, and I wanted to throw out a few security ideas. You got the suit, the resolution for the suit is, well, it's a little seed company of Certified Tech Roofing USA, subject by the Watch, and we're going to call it Drone Works Technologies, in particular FM, Integrated Flight System, Flight Management Systems. We call it FMs. And basically, it's a drone dock with special technology for landing, magnet, guidance, plug, and a few extra chips for security purposes. People would be able to order up on the app. So any of you guys feel like you're in a situation, you'd be able to order it up on your phone for a very cheap cost. The police would be able to use it as well, and the Watch would be able to use it and work with police. Another idea I'm going to throw out there is, well, I'm from Vancouver, Canada. Hastings Street is where I kind of like worked as CI's with Adam Palmer, and we have this great idea that we train law enforcement officers. So, we would equip them with CI's, you know, a few each, confidential informants, and go on to the training field, the best training field in the world, the biggest hood in the world, Hastings Street, Vancouver, Canada. And I would, well, I would be the drill sergeant, and believe me, things would clean up really quick, and we can get these cops after the people that really deserve it. And that's my two ideas. I thought it was two minutes, Mayor.
No, it's three minutes.
But I also would like my property back, because a CI needs his property, like my four computers, my phone, my generator, because like, we can't really go into places because of all the trespassing that's going on. I already dealt with about maybe 700 of your units, that's a pretty penny, in about 50 days. So, all various different types of units. And, yeah, we'll leave it at 36.
All right, thank you, sir.
Hamish Lachlan John Campbell, Jim.
All right, thank you.
Jim Lantner, Marie Taylor, and Rachel Mendoza.
Thank you, good evening Mayor and council and city staff. I'm here tonight on behalf of a local acting group called the Mad Hatter Players, and their director Frank Valasteras. We have three, well, we had one play, Alice in Wonderland in September, we're doing two more plays. Night of the Living Dead opens up next Friday night, the 24th, at 7:30. We have taken an old-used furniture store on G Street and converted it into a really cool little throwback 50s theater, and it's quite a production. We have about 27 performers in the troupe, excuse me, in the troupe, and we had fairly good success for Alice in Wonderland. We were able to pay the rent for the building that month, that was good. I'd like to encourage the public and all of you to take a couple hours and come down and see Night of the Living Dead. I did leave some flyers with the city clerk, and I'm actually going to ask for those back, because I forgot to bring flyers for the crowd, so I don't know who has them, but anyway, if I could get those back, I'll make sure the council gets all the information via email within a day or two, and the city staff. I would like to encourage all of you, if possible, to do that. I do want to thank the Rotary Club of the Delta, who has taken us under their wing and sponsored us. They actually have afforded our insurance to us at no cost and saved us about $2,000, and we appreciate that. And then, a person who doesn't like any notoriety, but I do have to mention Sharon Bezwick through the Bezwick Family Fund has also helped us out financially with the endeavor. She believes in amateur performing arts, as I do, and it's a privilege to work with Frank and help him put these productions on in September, October, and December. We'll be back in December to talk about Humbug, which is a tradition that's gone on for 47 years in Antioch, and it's an amazing play also, and Frank does a great job, and these folks don't get paid. Their passion is acting, their passion is their director. So, I'd encourage all of you, I would like the public also to thank the gentleman from the Pittsburgh Council that came to one of our performances, and the Brentwood folks that came also. They were intrigued with what we were doing and possibilities of maybe doing the plays in one of their cities next year. So, thanks so much, I appreciate it.
Next is Mary Taylor, followed by Rachel Mendoza.
Good evening, city council. My name is Marie Taylor, and this is Pat Carpenter, and we're from the Antioch Senior Center. We recently had our trip coordinator terminated, and we really would like to have her back. A letter was left with Mr. Burnell, with Mr. Wright, with our director at the center, June, and also the Antioch Board. Pat is going to read a petition that we got signed for her to be reinstated.
I'd like to say thank you to the council for having us, and although we've lost most of our public audience here, we think it's important to you to know how we felt about Mary, and how we feel now that we've lost her. For those of us who had been privileged to know Mary, the trip coordinator for the Antioch Senior Center, you can only, we can only understand how heart-wrenching it is to imagine losing her. Mary was not just an employee, she was a remarkable pillar of our community. Her dedication and passion for creating the most memorable and delightful trips for us seniors in Antioch are unparalleled. She was always approachable, loving, kind, caring, funny, always extending compassionate hand to anyone who needed it. She had an unwavering commitment that ensured that all of our senior needs were met, often going above and beyond to cater to personal preferences and making everyone feel cherished and heard. She meticulously created trips that were not just journeys and places to go, but memorable, incredible experiences that enlightened, enriched, and brought immense journey and joy to everyone involved. From educational outings to serene escapes, each trip was executed with the finest attention to detail and safety. Her unique ability to design such engaging and enjoyable excursions is rare and an invaluable skill that tremendously benefits our senior community. Losing Mary has not just been losing a member of our community. She was a dedicated employee, and we felt that all of you should know that. Thank you.
Thank you ladies.
Rachel Mendoza, Gail Keen, followed by Ralph A. Hernandez.
Thank you for having me. I'm representing 615 West 7th Street. There are 84 apartments for senior independent living. Over a year ago, I reported for a meeting with one of our, with our property management and one of the city assistants that came to our apartment to assist us in getting better markings around our apartment. We have the whole block, it's not gated, it's open to the public. So, we were getting a lot of people with RVs and parking right in front of where we lived, with animals that were digging in the garbage and just wreaking havoc. We thought that bringing the city council or city assistant, that she would help us mark some of the street where it would not be able to be parked, but we haven't heard anything from her. We were asking for signs, no parking, lighting, we were asking her for markings that are already there, just to be updated. We didn't hear anything, and this has been over a year. So, I've called, I've tried to kind of see what was going on, and they would, Cecilia would say, "Well, I'll get back with you and I'll report it," but I never heard anything. I need someone to assist me in finding out how we can get these corners marked, so we don't have RVs and people that are just hanging out there, because then there's no room for us to park or pick up, because we have a lot of people that need to be picked up with services, that can't hardly walk. So, if we can get somebody to reach out to Casa del Rio, 615 West 7th Street, for Rachel or the management, which is Noreen Gerald, we would really deeply appreciate some kind of help from the city. Thank you.
Gail Keen.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Gail Keen, and I'm a board member with the El Campanil Theater Preservation Foundation. For nearly a century, El Campanil Theater has been a gathering place for this community, a space where people come together to enjoy the arts, celebrate creativity, and connect with one another right here in downtown Antioch. Like many arts organizations, we've faced real challenges. Our focus right now is on stabilizing and strengthening the way we operate. Every day, we're working to improve our management systems, evaluate costs, and make sure we're running as efficiently and responsibly as possible. To support that effort, we've launched our new Keep the Arts Alive in Antioch pledge drive. Our goal is to reach $25,000 in monthly recurring donations, which would give us the cushion we need to cover essential operating costs and continue making long-term improvements. I know that amount sounds like a lot, but given that Antioch's population is over 100,000 people, if a quarter of those folks were to give just $2 per month, we would double that goal. For anyone able to give a bit more, even $25 a month from supporters makes a meaningful impact. These pledges help us buy more time, time to stabilize, strengthen our foundation, and keep this beautiful theater serving the community it was built for. This is about sustainability, accountability, and community pride. With your support, we can keep the light shining and ensure the arts remain a vital part of Antioch's identity. Please check our website for upcoming events, and to learn more about our pledge drive, please visit donate.alcampaniltheater.com. Thank you for your time, and thank you for helping us keep the arts alive in Antioch.
Thank you.
Ralph A. Hernandez, followed by Rick Standenter, Rika Davis Sheard.
Ralph Hernandez. It's about time that the city council, city staff prioritize the police department, public safety. Our officers are put into an environment that is unsafe and dangerous. As I've stated over and over and over, our community is also, have been placed into an unsafe and dangerous city. The city, over decades, has maintained that. You have put the public safety last. Look at all the proposals that have come before you, the city overall. A developer, you guys kiss their butts. You guys go head over heels to provide them with money, with not having to pay their own way that they're supposed to, according to our general plan. Public safety is, and should always be, your priority. When we had the tech scandals here in Antioch, I condemned those who acted up and did wrong, including some criminality. But overall, the great majority of the officers, I have always supported, and I still support them. I'm trying to wake you guys up, that public safety for our community, as well as for our police officers, should be your priority. All that other nonsense that you guys bring and spend hours and hours and hours talking about and looking and researching is hogwash. You know, if the city is sued by the officers because you have maintained, maintained, an unsafe environment, a dangerous environment, to your employees, which happen to be the public's employees also, they can come back on you under the doctrine of the respondent superior. That means even individually, they can come after you. If I was an officer working in this city, and I got hurt, I'd come after you individually, because you guys are all adults. Now, your safety goals, according to what was put up recently, there's only two of you that talked about safety, Louis Rocha and Burnell. Unfortunately, not enough. You still do not maintain what you are required to by the general plan, minimum. Either straighten up, or the public will straighten it up. Thank you.
Rick Standenter, Rika Davis Sheard, Velma Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor Burnell and council, I'm Rick Statlander. I'm a resident of Antioch for 35 years. I'm here to represent indivisible of East Contra Costa County. Our democracy is under attack. The Trump administration is eroding our rights and freedoms as guaranteed in our Constitution, especially our rights of free speech and peaceful assembly. Trump is attempting to defund and dismantle federal agencies. Trump is trying to spread false claims about voter fraud. Trump is attempting to weaponize government power to target political opponents, journalists, and universities. Trump is attempting to target free speech. ICE raids are taking citizens and our neighbors. If you are concerned, or if any of you are concerned about any of this, please join us and millions of Americans for No Kings Day in America. We have local events on 10/18 this Saturday. Details include a rally at 11:00 AM, followed by a march at 12:00 PM. The march begins at the former Regal Theater at 4200 Lowndry, and it ends at, the march ends at Hillcrest and Lowndry, where we'll have a peaceful protest. And we will also be peacefully protesting on all of the Highway 4 East County overpasses from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. Please support No Kings in America. All of these details are found on Facebook at indivisible east Contra Costa. All of these details are found on Facebook at indivisible east Contra Costa County. Also, info's available at nokings.org. Finally, I have flyers. Stop Trump from rigging elections. And that's also in support of Proposition 50. So I'll have these, I'll leave some of these out, outside, so you can pick one up if you like. And other than that, thank you for listening, and please vote yes on Prop 50.
Rika Davis Sheard, Velma Wilson, Melissa Case. We will skip Rika. We'll go to Velma Wilson.
Good evening, Council. First, I have to say thank you for your service. Thank you for doing this work. It's arduous, and I knew it. But I want to remind the community and all of those who have served this country in the armed services. Veterans Day is approaching, November 11th. Delta Veterans Group in the city of Antioch is planning an amazing event, spectacular event, including our parade. So I wanted to make sure we start getting the parade applications in. You can send or inquire about being an entry in the parade, parade entry Or you can also go to deltaveteransgroup.org, and you can get more information. Please, this is a community event that celebrates all of those that served this country, gave of their time, their talent, and their lives. So please come out and support our veterans for Veterans Day. There will be a pancake breakfast starting, that will be hosted by the Antioch Rivertown Veterans Lions Club, and then our normal veterans celebration, and then the parade will commence. So let's come out again on November 11th to support our veterans community. Also, within that week, we will also be celebrating history, African-American history, in the likes of little six-year-old Ruby Bridges' Walk to School Day that will be on the corner of G Street and Eighteenth, which will take up, make it an L, will be Antioch Middle, Antioch High School, and also the students that are walking up to Marsh Elementary. Please make sure when you're traveling around our schools, you are thinking of public safety and our pedestrian safety, because there will be a lot of children out on that day specifically learning the history of little Ruby Bridges, who never missed a day of school because she was just that happy to be able to sit in a classroom to go to school. So if you can, come out and support Ruby Bridges' Walk to School Day, which will be on Friday, November the fourteenth. It will again be in the corridor of G Street and Eighteenth Street, which will take up Antioch Middle, Antioch High School, and lead up right off to Marsh Elementary School. Please, again, to all the public, slow down around our schools. Make sure our streets are safe.
Melissa Case, followed by John Collins.
Something positive. I don't know if you've been on the new Antioch Citizen Rims website for public safety. It's amazing. So I know Bessie had a little bit to do with that, so thank you. And then also, we have a new city, Antioch city website, which is so much easier to navigate. I spoke to Mr. Pio, I can't remember his name. But the only thing missing from, like, it wasn't giving notifications. It's giving notifications now. And it's just missing some historical, but he just told us it'd probably be up in a week or so. That's for me to do my fact-checking, but it's an amazing website. We are back in, up to reality, not back in the 1990 website. So I just want to thank you guys for all the hard work, because I've been wanting this for a long time. Thanks.
John Collins. And for the record, Rika Davis Sheard was not in the chamber.
Yeah, while I'm here, and I can't hear too well, but what I got to say will be short and quick, like Chris Berman on ESPN, Swami. You know, I've been in Antioch for thirty-one years, thirty-one years, and this place is the pit. I want to go back to Jersey. Things are better back there, but my wife has talked me to staying here. And, you know, that's another thing. You know, my wife had a space and business here. And, you know, she was talked to like, she's a Mexican, and she was talked to like she made a run for the border to get over here. And what's done? Nothing. You know, business as usual, just like on Sycamore. And I am so sick of people running into my house. I live on the corner of Harbor and Davison. Oh, but you know, I don't know if y'all know it or not, but that's the new Antioch Speedway. You know, this morning, as a matter of fact, on the corner of Barmouth and, Barmouth and Davison, you know, there's a wreck. People drive through there like, hey, you know, I ought to get a checkered flag. Hey, hey. You know, and you know, I'm tired of them running up on my property. You know, so, you know, that's all I got to say. You know, y'all need to handle it. I'm out of here.
We have no other speaker cards.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item number, item number three, announcements of civic and community events.
Really want me to follow that? All right. Do my best. I got Velma some backup here. All right, we got October 18th, following, the sixth annual celebration of Halloween. We're gonna have pumpkins in the pool. We're gonna have mazes, a lot of fun stuff, giveaways, a costume contest. In collaboration with Public Safety, we're gonna be doing a trunk or treat outside. The time is gonna be from 2:00 to 5:00 for the trunk or treat, and from 2:00 to 6:00 for the following event inside the water park. You can get pre-sale tickets right now at $9, or day of $13. The pool is warm. Come ready to get in the pool. Get some pumpkins out of the pool.
Since we've been talking so much about our public safety, it's a perfect time to announce tomorrow, tomorrow, October 15th, Genesis Church on Woodland Drive, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, Community Violence Forum. This is a prime for you to be able to come and to speak, be heard, and talk about what you would like to see, but also hear what's already happening and the, and the really, the progress that our police department is really doing. This is about community violence. We have more things coming as we are really making sure we are hearing the voice of the community. So come on out, Genesis Church, 6:00 PM tomorrow, mañana, tomorrow, 6:00 PM.
That is 6:00 PM tomorrow. All right, and then on Saturday, October 25th, we have the Empowerment Healing Walk. It is the third annual by Public Safety. We have lace up your sneakers and walk with us, and it's gonna be at 7:30 AM at the community center on Lone Tree. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Is the chief still here, or is he? Oh, he's talking to a gentleman? Okay. So there's Antioch Police Department Halloween event on October 31st. Yeah, what time? It starts, it's from 3:00 until 6:00 o'clock. So hopefully, the community can make it out there. It's at APD at 300 L Street. Item number four, announcements of boarding commission openings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Antioch Police Oversight Commission has one full-time vacancy, which expires November of 2028. The Board of Administration Appeals has two full-time vacancies and one part-time vacancy. The Parks and Recreation Commission has one partial term vacancy and one alternate vacancy. The deadline to apply is 5:00 PM on October 31st. Applications can be obtained at the city's website, in the lobby, or by contacting the city clerk's office. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Item, our next item, City Council Committee Reports and Communications. Councilmember Freitas. None. Councilmember Wilson.
None of my committees met.
Mayor Pro Tem Rocha?
Same here. My committees meet next, next week, two of them.
All right, none of my committees met. Mayor's comments, we will listen to those next time. Item number five, Consent Calendar. Are there any items that, Council or the public would like to poll?
Mr. Mayor, item G. And item N O P Q.
Okay.
And, sorry, that's it.
Okay. Any others that the Council would like to poll?
We've requested, received a request for items J, K, L, and M. M as in Mary.
All right, and any, any other ones to make it a full alphabet? Okay, so, so we have, we have items G, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q being polled. So do I have a motion to approve items A, B, C, D, E, F, H, I? R, S. No, no. I'm sorry. Are you, are you joking? I'm sorry. Okay. No, no, that, that's it. Okay, so I have a motion for those items.
So moved.
All right, you have a motion. Have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Thank you. Motion passes 4-0 with Councilmember Tamesha Torres Walker. Excused.
All right, item number G.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. This item is to authorize the execution of an agreement with Economic and Planning Systems, Inc. to prepare an updated development impact fee study. The original study was prepared in 2014, and the city adopted impact fees for four categories: general administration, public works, police facilities and equipment, and parks and recreation facilities. The proposed scope of work will include a review and update of the four fees and a fee comparison feasibility analysis. Director Store or his staff will be available to answer questions about this item. I don't see, I don't see him, so that's why I'm, I paused, sorry. I can answer questions if they're not hard. Oh, Zoe, come on, planning manager.
Was there, was there a question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. On this particular item, you know, one of the things we have discussed during the budget preparation is that all fees, charges, and assessments should be approved annually to keep up with inflation and other things of that sort. Here's a perfect example of that, impact fees, and there's a particular person in the chamber that talks about impact fees constantly. And so this, I'm happy that this is here, and I'd like to thank the city manager and the Community Development Department for bringing it here. But I would also challenge staff that we look at all our fees, charges, and assessments and begin a thorough process of bringing them up to the current status. The other that I have, Mr. Mayor, it appears on the scope of work itself. It's on, let's see, it's E B 3. And in the letter of engagement, the last paragraph on that page, you know, it does talk about beyond its development impact fee practice, EPS, which is the firm, has also provided real estate, public finance, strategic consulting to a wide variety of additional projects in Contra Costa County. This includes work in the cities of Oakley, Oakley, Concord, Walnut Creek, and Hercules, as well as some in Alameda County. So when you go through the scope of work specifically, what I, I guess I need to understand is that we've identified four here, but there's also other, when they looked at, I think it was Oakley, they were, there were other things that we could actually take a look at. I think there are four additional impact fees. And so my question is, why aren't we looking at all of these instead of just the four?
David Store, consultant to the city in the Community and Economic Development Department. Short answer is yes, we're gonna look at everything.
Oh, you are?
Yes. EPS, depending on the particular company or location of the company, they provide different services. We selected this company because they can look at, they've done work in the local area, and they will be looking at other jurisdictions. For example, a major road fee. We don't have one. Okay, and so it's a large piece of impact fees, depending on the impacts, and we have to make a nexus under AB 1600. Yeah, so I mean, we're not limited to four. We'll be looking at the four, amending the four, and looking to see what other impacts that are there that new development creates for us.
Are they gonna go concurrently with this particular plan?
Yes, sir.
At the price established?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's great news.
Sorry, I could have answered that. Yes, it's a broad study. That wasn't a hard question, sorry.
With that, Mr. Mayor, if there are no other questions or public comments?
So any public comment on this item?
We have Andrew Becker.
Gee, why am I surprised?
Thank you. So I just had a clarifying question. Looking at the illustrative table under the scope of work, it shows the demographic and land use analysis performed in the first three weeks of month one. As we're going through a general plan update process, which includes a housing element, which was recently adopted, are we under the assumption that the land use designations that the city has in that housing element process, in that housing element are expected to be brought over into that general plan? Or are those land use and zoning types going to be reviewed through that process? Because it would seem, I don't even want to say redundant, it would, it would seem the wrong direction to review a current land use policy that might possibly be amended in this general plan at the, within the first three weeks, and then build out a fee schedule or a nexus study based off of what our current standards are instead of the presumption of what we're looking to go to. So I'll just ask that clarifying question. Maybe there is an answer for that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other, any other public comment?
We have no other speakers to this item.
All right, do we have a motion? A second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Thank you. Motion passes 4-0 with Councilmember Torres Walker. Excused.
All right, item number J.
Thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. It is recommended that you all adopt a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Building Performance Service Agreement with Honeywell International Incorporated for the installation of eighteen new heating, ventilation, and air conditioning units and duct work as a part of the Nick Rodriguez Community Senior Center Roof Replacement Project in the amount of $356,749. Did you have a question, or would you like a staff presentation?
Well, I have a question. One reason I have a question, and also be the same for K and L, because I wanted to put some clarification on why they were separated out. I'm sorry. Oh, I can just speak to J.
Yeah, just speak to J right now.
In regard to J, I was just wondering why the consent item is broken into an individual item on the same building, which is Nick Rodriguez? Without jumping into the next two, I was just wondering why it was parceled out.
Okay, I think it's three different contracts for three different reasons, but I can have our staff come and explain.
I didn't mean to jump the gun, but.
We're like a good bundle.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Be happy to answer any questions. The question is, why are the three projects broken out?
Yeah, I was just wondering, in regard to the project being Nick Rodriguez, and looking at the, the large project that is happening with the HVAC, ruffine, et cetera, it's one project, and just some clarification on why it was broken out into three separate items versus one overall project.
Yeah, so it's all one project, but it takes the four different vendors to get the project done, and it's to realize cost savings for the city. This particular item is just for our current contractor to do the installation of the, of the eighteen new units and duct work that needs to be done to refurbish the HVAC system. So they'll just be providing labor under this agreement, under this amendment.
Okay, I think one of the concerns that was brought my way through communications was would this have an impact on PLA agreements?
I know.
Because I believe there's a threshold of some sort when it comes to projects, and I was just trying to clarify if that changes the level of work that would take place of that project through PLA.
No, it will not.
And just to follow up on that, so the city back in twenty twenty-one, end of twenty twenty-one, entered into a project labor agreement for citywide projects that are one million dollars or more. And so the overall project at Nick Rodriguez is now at one point six million between the roof and the HVAC and all of that. And so the question is, to follow up, why wouldn't this project qualify under the citywide PLA?
I can let Director Bunton speak to that.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Yeah, so for this particular project, the way that it was looked upon was we had multiple venues to be able to get this work performed. The work itself was the installation of the new roof, which was bid out to a contractor to do the construction of the work. The materials also were built, were bid out, publicly bid as they were. So the procurement method wasn't changed in the method of doing this, and the other contractors to do the design also. So the project itself was an overall project, including the design, you did get over that a million dollars, but the project itself, utilizing the contracts that we had in place, staff felt that it didn't cross those thresholds, utilizing the contracts that we had in place and the way the work could get done.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure that's gonna satisfy as far as the final answer, but thank you for that.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions from council? Do we have any public comment on this?
Yes, Eric Haynes?
I would love to have more than three minutes on this one. So first, I'm gonna start out with Honeywell was awarded a three-year service contract for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The first year, which is this year, was estimated to be about a hundred thousand dollars. They're increasing the cost of that contract, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars to do this work, just labor only. It's already part of an existing project. I wanna know, was this thing even bid out? How do you know you're saving money if you're just giving it to somebody else? That's number one. Number two, it's labor only. There's still another item that I'll be speaking on. All the pieces add up to one pie. There's absolutely no reason for it to be broken up the way that it is, only to skirt the PLA. Look at me. He won't even look at me.
Mr. Haynes?
I'm sorry, I'm pissed about this. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me, I'm sorry, sorry. But you take all the pieces and you add them up, and it's a whole pie. Everything, all the documents reference one project. It was intentionally broken up for what I see as a reason to skirt the PLA. There's no reason why it couldn't have been bid as one entire package. How could the roof contract be awarded for labor only? And now you've got a material cost add to that, and now you've got HVAC replacement and ductwork labor add to that, and equipment add to that, all separate. I rarely see this happen. That's not efficient at all to have all these different pieces from all over the place. If you have one contractor responsible for the whole thing as one project, it's gonna run way more efficiently. They're gonna be able to schedule everything, coordinating all this stuff coming together in a timely fashion is crazy. So let me just point out, eighteen units, three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. You're gonna have about eighty percent of that is gonna be labor, because there's still some material in there for the ductwork. I'm being generous. That's about a hundred and twenty hours per unit for replacement, that's about thirty to forty percent high. You're looking at an added cost of seventy-five to ninety-five thousand dollars because it wasn't bid out properly. I don't know how it's being done cheaper.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment?
We have no other public comments to this item.
All right, any comments from councils at this point? Oh, yes.
So this contract with Honeywell is under Sourcewell, it is bid out under the Sourcewell agreement with the state of Minnesota when we came under, when we went under, and when we entered this agreement. So the pricing that we got is that Sourcewell pricing that was bid out. And the same with the other, with the other materials, the CMAS contract, when we're gonna talk about the roofing, by buying that material directly, we save by using a CMAS contract, which is a bid process. It's a cooperative agreement. And we can speak to those when we come to them, but this is a bid contract Honeywell through Sourcewell, state of Minnesota.
All right, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, so this is one piece of a bigger, as Mr. Haynes said, bigger pie. We have one building with different items on the agenda. And under our PLA, our citywide PLA, I'm not sure if these items are gonna push us over the million dollar threshold. So I don't know what's the best course of action where we have these three items and, you know.
Does our engineering, does our public works want to address that?
So like the deputy director was saying, the intent of this project was utilizing either a sole source or a cooperative bid with the intent to, so there was money savings. The intent of trying to skirt anything wasn't even thought of as this. I understand what's being said, and I would listen to the city attorney. If the council desired us to go in a different direction, we could do that. But by no means was there an intent to try to skirt anything, but like I said, we're willing to discuss this.
So we have a PLA for this building?
We have a citywide PLA for any project that's over one million dollars.
And so I guess the question is, has our staff examined whether this PLA, this project is subject to the PLA? I mean, I understand, so there are alternatives to typical bidding, CMAS and this, the other, I mean, we can do that. But the question that I think maybe staff, maybe we need to address it or look at it further is, have we violated the PLA, which would be independent of these contracting options?
Correct, correct, so I guess to be on the safe side, I would recommend that we, yeah, go ahead.
So what Director Wright was talking about is, the project itself is complicated, there is more than one thing going on here. You do have a roof replacement, that's happening, the roof replacement and the material replacement. You also then have some HVAC stuff that's going on, not necessarily a roof replacement, but it is on the roof. So there is a separation there. If everything gets combined, I can understand what you're talking about, but like Director Wright had said, you do have, the HVAC portion is separate from, I can see it being a separate operation than the roof replacement.
Yeah, I guess, I guess when we, if you add up all the pieces of the project so far, it's one point six million dollars. And so, you know, which well exceeds the one million dollar threshold. So I would recommend that we continue the items related to this until we can, until we can get to the answer, you know, through the city attorney's office of whether it is in compliance or not with the citywide PLA.
And that's the reason why I brought it up, because I had those concerns that when looking, you know, when I was at Antioch High School and we did a bond measure, although we were doing the auditorium and doing different projects, when it's one building, like be the auditorium, when you're putting HVAC and doing all the upgrades, that's one project. And I don't see it divided up between HVAC and the flooring and the different things that we're doing. It's one project combined that reaches a certain level. And so when I first read this and it was brought to my attention, some of the concerns by union members that work under PLA agreements, that's why I wanted to bring up the question, just to make sure that we are in compliance with what agreements have been set forth prior to my arrival. And just wanted to make sure that we get legal advice on that.
So do we, City Attorney, would it be best to continue this item?
Yes, continue it to your next meeting.
To our next meeting, so do we have a motion to continue item J to the next city council meeting?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
J, K, and L are the three impacted.
They are, I didn't know if we could take them all, all three together right now.
Sure, we can do whatever we want. So I'll move that we hold over items J, K, and L for legal review and opinion for the October twenty-eighth meeting.
All right, we have a motion, no second, please cast your votes.
Do we have a speaker before we cast her, because there's somebody, did you?
No, he already made a public comment. Oh, you're saying on the other items?
You wanna speak on K and L even though we're gonna move it?
Okay, we have public comment on K and L, or K, L?
Which one are we on?
I guess it would be K.
We'd be on K.
Eric Haynes?
I won't need to speak on L for the record. I'm gonna read the fiscal impact that's in the staff report, it's the same for J, K, and L. Fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six capital improvement budget includes a California Natural Resources Agency state grant in the amount of two point two million dollars for the Nick Rodriguez Community Senior Center Roof Replacement Project. Grant funds will be utilized to purchase the eighteen new heating, ventilation, and air conditioning units needed for this project in the amount of two hundred eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars. That's specific to K. At tonight's council meeting, staff is requesting approval of three contracts for this project totaling one million, thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred, sixteen dollars and ninety-six cents in addition to previously approved construction contract of six hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars for a total amount of one million, six hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-six cents in contracts for the project. That's in the staff report. There's no reason to break, you wanna break up the contracts for purchasing stuff, fine, it still falls under the PLA right here. It's that simple. And I don't understand this, they only got one bid from Honeywell, who they already had a contract for to do maintenance work? That's not putting it out to bid. I didn't see a public contract notification in the report that it went out to bid. So I, something's weird, so thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Hello, good evening, my name is Lamwell. So just as a project manager in my day job, I just wanna clarify that Sourcewell too, I've seen it in my projects as well with public works. In my opinion, only national firms really tend to bid on Sourcewell, because as they mentioned, it is the state of Minnesota cooperative. So if the goal, if one of our goals as a city is to encourage local contractors and local economy to flourish, then I would review the Sourcewell contracting, because what it does is it eases the administrative burden on our city by just saying, well, Sourcewell, you procure everything, and we'll just pick it from you because we trust that you procured it via public municipal codes. And now you just pick from a list, you don't have to do these extra steps that you have to do as a local, as a public works department. So I just wanna say, if you folks, that is the goal, one of our goals is to encourage also the local businesses, local economy, or even union jobs, I would take a look at Sourcewell, because in my line of work, when I looked at that, those Sourcewell contracts, it's cheaper. Why is it cheaper? Because it's national firms, like how would you as a small business here in Antioch know about the state of Minnesota cooperative for a painting job or an HVAC job? That's why you have Honeywell, because they know these big cooperatives, it's just easy for them to bid on it. And they have all the mechanisms in place to bid on these large type of cooperatives. So I would take a look at that Sourcewell contracting if one of our goals as a city is to make sure local businesses can bid on our taxpayers' money, right? Sure, we might save some money on this big type of contracting, but I believe we should also encourage our local economy to bid on our taxpayer money, so that's it.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
We have no other public comments to this item.
All right, so do we have a motion on items J, K, and L to continue them to the October twenty-eighth city council meeting?
Move to approve.
Motion is second, please cast your votes.
Thank you, motion passes four zero with Councilmember Torres Walker, excused.
All right, item M, formation of a community facilities district for the Cowan Ranch Residential Project.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. This item is authorizing, adopting a resolution to authorize the California Statewide Community Development Authority to form a community facilities district within the city of Antioch to finance certain public improvements. Oh, okay, 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 embodying a joint community facilities agreement, setting forth the terms and conditions of the community facilities district financing, approving an acquisition agreement between the city and the developer or its assigee, and authorizing city staff to cooperate with the California Statewide Communities Development Authority and its consultants in connection with the community facilities district formation and financing. Do you have questions, or would you like the presentation?
All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we have Mr. Ralphem Hernandez.
Ralph Hernandez, this is what I'm talking about. You guys have left developers, landowners, special interests, campaign contributors off the hook. You have not made them pay their way, as our general plan says they are supposed to do. So therefore, you don't have the monies that you should have to pay for the police pensions and the others' pensions, for more police personnel, maintain public safety, allow the city to go into a mode of unsafe and dangerous to our residents, to the businesses, and to the officers themselves. You know, if you go in another country, if you wanna go as a person, even just as a citizen and become a citizen, they charge you, there are countries that'll charge you two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for you to do so without buying anything. You need to look at what you are doing. You are not charging people to come into our city and all the assets that we have developed for decades. You are not charging them what you should be charging them. If they want to come into our community, be a part of our community, you need to adjust your rates good enough to where they will pay their way, and you will not force the rest of us and our budget to pay for them to make millions and millions of dollars off of us and off of the city. This is a project that has one thousand, one hundred and seventeen residential units. You know what? The paperwork says that they will contribute one point four million dollars for safety. You believe that? The paperwork says that they will contribute $1.4 million for safety. You believe that? I'm not against forming a CFD, but even other council people that I've talked to before, they said it's not enough. We can't even pay for officers that that development brings the troubles and the requirements and everything else. Or the school district, or the fire district. A former city attorney said, "The city of Antioch has to stop development until you pay and make them pay their way in." We don't have enough officers. You are allowing our officers to, to have more and more responsibilities. You are putting even them at further risk because you're not providing the public safety that they should have for our population. 144 sworn officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Andrew Becker.
Thank you. Just a couple of clarifying points for the previous speaker. The staff report does show an inaccuracy of 1,117. The resolution represents 1,177, which I believe is the true count. The CFD that the city, the CFD process is a new process that the city, well, relatively new process in the scheme of Antioch, grand scheme, is a relatively new process to address the inadequacies of the previous assessment districts that are still continuing to be, have a large impact on the city's general fund. And so I know that the city is working aggressively to address that. You know, as we talk about police safety and some of the historic decisions that have happened here in the city, while we talk about impact fees not being what they are and that being an issue that the council currently is working to address, we also have to acknowledge that previous councils have put out bonds that have refinanced city facilities. And so the city of Antioch does not even own its police station. That is owned by a successor agency because of bonds that were refinanced and that police station will not even be paid off until 2032. So I think that we need to look back historically at what the city has done, not just five years ago, 10 years ago. I'm talking about 20, 30, 40 years ago, that has brought us to where we are today. Developers are going to come in and they're going to build at the cost that you as a city have set forth. So this frankly should have been a conversation back in the 90s. This should have then continued into the 2000s, 2010s, and today. And council today is working aggressively. And so while I acknowledge that this potential sellout at the cost that they have on average per unit is around $1.2 billion, and I also acknowledge that that is not all profit to the developer. There are a lot of costs that go into building. I also acknowledge that the city has a responsibility there. Not today's council, not today's city staff. In my opinion, they're working to address the discrepancies that have been here in this city for a long time standing. So I appreciate council and staff for the work that they do to diligently address this. I appreciate the developer for coming forward and committing $68 million towards those fees so that it all does not get passed on to the bond taxpayers. And I acknowledge that this is going to bring a product type to our city and specifically my neighborhood that is a benefit to our community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comment?
We have no other public comment.
Any questions from staff? I have, I have one question.
Okay.
The, the tax rate, the total tax burden it says is 1.9 for the market rate and for the age restriction is 1.8. But that said, it's without the HOA fees. And so I'm just curious what the HOA fees are, and the developer can answer that, what the HOA fees are for this project.
We can ask them to come up, but at this point, I do not believe they have those fees. They, they do not know what those fees are currently.
Okay. They don't have a ballpark or?
Yeah, I think he does. He's gonna, he's shaking his head. So, sorry, Scott, I'm looking behind you.
Kyle Masters, Richland's Communities. We put estimates when we figured out what the bonds were going to be. You know, in the senior community, it's just going to depend on the facility. So we don't know that part. But in this project, we don't have any big ticket items to put in the HOA. We have the cluster product, so those alleyways will be in an HOA. We've got a few entry mind mutations, the big traffic circles, you know, the landscaping and that. So we really don't think for the average 5,000 square foot lot that it's going to be, you know, over 100 bucks. It's probably 75 to 100 dollars. So really a fairly reasonable amount in HOA. Now remember, we've got the police CFD, we've got the fire CFD, we've got, we're paying for all of our services and then some. So this is just one piece of a very big puzzle. And we have a GAD who you're going to get a workshop on, which is another piece of the financing puzzle, so.
May I ask another question? So, so the, the, the term of, so the CFD payments are going to include both the capital and the maintenance side of it initially until the capital's paid off and then it'll just be the maintenance? I guess that's for the?
On the maintenance side, you know, we're going to annex into the city's CFD and lighting and landscaping district. So that'll handle the maintenance of, you know, the, the public facilities.
Are those separate from the, is that separate from the CFD?
Correct.
Okay.
Whole different district.
So you guys are going to be pushing 2% on this thing then, right?
That's all calculated in that number.
Oh, and the 1.9, is that all in?
All in.
Okay.
Including an estimate for the HOA, which is, I'm pretty sure we probably calculated around an HOA 100 bucks. And it includes an estimate for the GAD as well.
Okay, perfect. Because the reason I'm asking this is because back in the 90s, you know, there, there were Melrose districts that had high assessments. And so property owners that were disclosed that, were aware of that when they bought, but then, you know, a couple of years down the road.
You add it all in.
The, the folks come to city council and then we're the bad guys because we.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we, because we're the ones that approved this. So I just want to make sure there's full disclosure on what we're approving here.
We worked really hard to make sure. We know, we've had many discussions that that's a concern. And so we've worked real hard to make sure we've, we've put a good, solid estimate for everything that's going to be in this.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Stay there.
Yes, sir.
So Richland is coming forward to actually create this community facilities agreement, and there's some criticism about it. So I, in your, your report itself, in the report itself, it talks about the authorized improvements off, offsite. What's included? Storm drainage, sanitary sewer, domestic water, reclaimed water, street improvement, signalization for $8 million. Authorized improvements onsite and in tracks, storm drainage, sanitary, domestic, reclaimed water, streets improvements for 90, almost $91 million. And then we have authorized city of Antioch impact fees, general administration $541,000, public works $523,000. Police, $1.4 million. Park and recreation, $3.8 million. Fire protection fees, $1.119 million. Signal lights, $506 million. Water capacity, which is the, the ability to service water for emergencies rather and regular use, $7.3 million. Sewer connection, $3.5 million. Economic development program, 4.5. And if I, memory serves me correct, once you hit a particular number of houses that are built, that's coming to the city for economic development.
Correct.
So the, the total authorized for this project is, and I'm rounding up, $122 million. Developers contribution, your contribution is almost $66 million to pay for all these services.
Correct. And none of that is coming from you. We're, this is just like a home loan. We're just placing this against our property as a financing tool to build this infrastructure. Nobody can go out and write a check to your contractor for $150 million to build something. This is a financing tool. The homeowners will be paying for it along with us. And that's how we do business in today's world.
And if we did not have this available to us, what would be, generally speaking, the price increase in a home? And we keep on talking about affordability, keep on talking about different styles of houses.
Right.
So if, if we didn't have this, the pricing of every single house would go up substantially.
Yeah, another 20, 25,000 dollars a house if we didn't have this tool.
And so, and is it true that on, this is a deduction on federal and state taxes?
For the homeowner, I check with your.
From the phone, yeah.
Check your local accountants, is what we always say, but it has been.
I was in the Melrose from the first day to the last day.
Right.
And so all, even though we have a criticism for Mr. Hernandez about police, I think that that police services, fire services, infrastructure are more than adequately addressed, which makes the housing attractive and helps provide financing over an extended period of time. Is that right or wrong?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no further questions from council, may I please have a motion?
Oh, can we clarify the number? I want to reconcile if the staff report is correct or the resolution before we have to vote to. Okay.
1177.
All right. So is that within the reso? Andrew, was that? Okay, so you're good. Thanks. I have to ask our de facto staff over here.
All right, motion, have a second?
A second.
Motion, second. Please cast your vote.
Thank you. Motion passes four zero with council member Torres Walker excused.
Item N. Approve standout, achieve and rise SOAR internship subaward to Rubicon programs.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. This item requests approval of $478,773,66 cents. Subaward to Rubicon programs from our California Volunteers Youth Services Corps grant, not the general fund. It includes $150,000 in pass-through support to nonprofit CBO host sites. This will keep SOAR on track through December of 2026. It expands placements and remains fully grant-funded with no, again, general fund impact. So we're recommending approval and authorization to execute these agreements. Did you have a question or would you like a presentation?
I do. Mr. Scott, under fiscal impact, I just don't understand approving the quote unquote subaward of the $479,000 from the city's 1.74 million. So the money is coming from the grant. Did the 7.1.74 million pay for other things?
I believe yes. It's pass-through funding for community-based organizations. The director's here to explain.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Can you repeat that question, please?
I, I didn't understand, approving the quote unquote subaward, I've never seen that before, will allocate $479,000 of the city's 1.74 million.
I think it was more for transparency purposes. We are awarding Rubicon with $478,000. Of that $478,000, $150,000 will be passed through for nonprofits.
Okay, so on the, what we call, on the staff report itself, you have a breakdown of the various costs. And the one item that caught my eye is in 1B, transportation. It says for, I assume, 16, 18-month lease of a 10-passenger van that directly supports the goals of the grant, $54,000. That's almost the purchase of a vehicle. Why don't we purchase the vehicle?
We did. So this award was already approved. I put in a budget modification, which is going to get approved, which includes the $67,000 that we spent to purchase the 10-passenger van. So I spoke to my state representative and I said, hey, we ended up kind of looking at the cost analysis. This was, this grant was written a little less than a year ago. So that has been approved. But he said that that would be absolutely okay, and so we purchased it.
So we did purchase?
Yes.
I, I think that's outstanding. So.
Yes.
It's our property, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. The, okay, that's.
All right. Any other comments on this? Oh, yeah, we will. Any other, any, any public comments on this?
We have no public comments on this item.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve item N?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Please cast your vote.
I'm going to have the director stand here.
Okay.
Yay.
Sorry.
Thank you. Motion passes four zero with council member Torres Walker excused.
Before we get to item O, do we have a, a motion to extend the meeting until 11:30?
There's snacks in the back.
Move, move that we extend the meeting to 11:30.
Exactly.
A motion, second. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes four zero with council member Torres Walker excused.
All right, item O.
All right, thanks so much. This item updates our fiscal year 26 CalVIP grant budget to match the BSCC-approved award, so we can fully use the remaining $728,336, $366, I'm sorry, by December 31st, 2025. This reallocates personnel to $57,360 and adds $671,006 for professional services, ensuring compliance and timely reimbursement. Staff recommends adopting the resolution to align with our budget. So this is just a budget alignment. We did apply, I believe, some of us talked about this in our separate one-on-ones, that we applied for the next cohort and we will be making modifications to the program. So just one, which we won't be discussing tonight, we'll bring back to you. But this is just administrative line item swap.
Under fiscal impact on the staff report, it is exactly that, that issue. Remaining $728,366, which must be spent by December 31st, 2025. That's two months away.
Correct.
It, does it have, is it, do these things have to be under contract or do they actually have to be expended?
No, they have to be spent. They are currently under contract. About 150,000 of that 728 can be spent through June 30th of 2026 for our evaluators. That is the only approved cost past December 31st. The remaining items are for the nonprofits, for technical assistance, data management, and our boots on the ground for the CalVIP project.
So how, how are you going to spend that mon, I mean, so how do you spend the money? Are we up fronting the money?
No, it's a cost reimbursement grant. So what's happening is that, for example, two of our nonprofits have an invoice since February.
Since February?
Yes. And that had a lot to do with, you know, us coming to council, asking for the extension. They couldn't invoice until everything was in place. I'm confident that that amount will be spent by December.
Okay. I have no other questions if you're ready.
All right. Any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment on this.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve item O?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Let's cast your votes.
Thank you. Motion passes four zero with council member Torres Walker.
Thank you.
All right, item P.
Yes, thank you so much. This is to approve professional services agreement for K Zalinka Consulting to continue providing organizational efficiency implementation, I'm sorry, it's really late, services in an amount not to exceed $245,000 with a combination of salary savings that we have from vacant positions within the city manager's office. What I did in this contract was to include the scope of work as well as the operational assessments that have been done to date. These operational assessments were $50,000. So we went through purchasing procurement for this consultant and she has a contract. But because it was under my signing authority of $50,000, we did the first round, realized that this was going to be more intense because of our operational deficits and have one-off program assessments to do, including up next being the dispatch center, community and economic development department, parks and recreation, and the finishing of human resources department. So we wanted to make sure that the things that she has found were given in the first part as well as the operational assessments attached here for not only transparency but for public knowledge. So up to $245,000, we don't plan to use that. But we wanted to make sure that everything was covered because it is a. but we wanted to make sure that everything was covered because it is a lot to go through. So, I don't know if you were able to read, it's a lot. So we would love feedback from some of these assessments from the council as well. And we would like to, she will be coming to do a presentation. And in that presentation, we will be telling you what we are implementing as a result of what we've already found, including looking at the many different platforms that we have, for instance, that are not congruent with agency operations, that was identified in IS, for example. So lots of changes. One of the things that we asked her to do was, what changes can we make that are streamlined service delivery that don't have costs associated with them? So if it's combining different areas of the city, if it is looking at different platforms for combining and rolling out, we have certain platforms that we're not taking advantage of, like Civic Clerks. So Civic Plus, we're not doing certain add-ons that we already pay for. Same with Microsoft's Office Suite. So we're first doing a first round of, we actually have a lot of our own fixes, which is gonna help with the actual implementation of the recommendations. So she's also doing an assessment with what she's already done of what can be practically low-hanging fruit, and not just taking a lot of time and a lot of effort for her, so.
So just, just a couple of questions, again, under fiscal impact. So the recommendation is to hire for the next phase at a price of two hundred and forty-five thousand. But you, the cost savings is to keep the assistant city manager vacant as well as the executive assistant during this one-year contract.
Yes, and so it is actually capturing the assistant city manager sort of what I would have asked an ACM to do. And I did reply to these questions when the mayor asked. And yes, and we also don't have, I don't have the need for two executive assistant positions, so it's really kind of a budget neutral.
And that's fine, it's just when our next, when we start to look at the budget in January for the following fiscal year, I, you know, it's, to me, it's like, okay, you know, that means no assistant city manager-
Yeah, and it may not last that long, so it could be nine months. You gotta just have faith.
Okay, but I mean, you know, well, frankly, it's the reason why I'm supporting this primarily.
Thank you.
But the, the other, the other thing, as I went through, it's very sobering.
I know.
When you go through-
I, I did this for you.
Yeah.
So.
God bless you.
Yeah.
And so one of the things that concerns me, I mean, she, she does identify a lot of things, but the question, the ultimate question is the financials were. I mean, we can identify them, we can agree that these are issues, they need to be reconciled. I mean, I think, I forget which it was, right up front, there was an addition of five new employees, you know, and so, the report's long. And so I looked at that and I said, well, okay, I get it, but-
And I think that's kind of-
Where's the financial analysis going to cap it?
So basically, that would be a part of, this is just the first sweep. So the second sweep is, what I'm saying is, what can we do that's gonna not cost us right now to do some of these things? And then what are the actual budgeted items? Like, for instance, we already know that she's gonna be suggesting of purchasing and procurement.
Well, somebody else, I was very happy to see that.
And so, yes.
I know council members strongly suggested that centralized purchasing.
Well, you know, no comment. City manager did too, so. So I would say that, yes, this is a conversation that we need to build into the priority setting for the next upcoming fiscal year. What can we do? This is gonna take a long-range plan to fix. And, and I always say, you know, the directors and I talk, like, this didn't happen overnight, it's not gonna be resolved overnight. So, you know, we have to take a bite of the elephant, you know, one bite at a time. And then what is the council's priorities on what you wanna fix coming out of these recommendations as it relates to municipal service delivery? So at the end, you will get a full chart of all of the consolidated recommendations, and it will have a cost-benefit analysis as well.
Well, and, and that really is, you know, from my perspective, I mean, you're gonna have outstanding recommendations. If you can't, if you can't finance them, they're no good. And we're, we're gonna fall back further and we will have expended the money. So in summary, expect this is a trust me, you know, situation. But in January, or when she makes her presentation, that is the question I'm going to say. I want to understand how she quantifies financially the recommendations.
All right, any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment on this item.
All right, any other questions or comments from council? Have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second?
Second.
All right, motion second, please cast your votes.
Thank you, motion passes four zero.
All right, and finally, item Q, warrants approval from August twenty-sixth.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. So this was a council-requested item to come back for the warrants for our housing consultant. So you asked me at the time to find the contracts, which was no small feat, by the way. In terms of records management, it was a very eye-opening and sobering experience. And so we're grateful to the consultant for having everything on record. You also asked for the invoices for the year. For comparison, I gave you also the year prior. And, and it's on you. So let me know what questions you have.
And so, this is a question generally about the warrants. And in the discussion, you know, you, we defined the warrants, you know, referred to financial authorization documents and so on and so forth. The council's approval, the register formally authorizes those payments. I mean, my understanding, in almost fifty years of public service, is that when we see the warrant register, it gives not only the city council, but it gives the public the opportunity to come forward, pull an item off, and question it. What I heard is that, well, all those have already been paid.
Yes, this practice of the city is-
Not for ten years, not from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and eight.
Okay, all right.
So I, I think that we need to visit that because it's kind of a, you know, a mockery of having the warrant registers, which we have, we get to see as well as the general public. I've always assumed, and because I've served ten years, that unless and until the city council actually approves the warrant register, no bills, no bills are paid. And so I, I'd like to come back to visit that as a policy direction because I, I think, you know, it's telling the, the public, well, you can come up and you can question something, but you know what, it's already paid, so why bother? That, that doesn't sit well with me with transparency.
That makes sense. So I will bring this item back as a discussion. I would like to do it when we have our finance director here to discuss it.
That's right.
Okay.
All right, any public comment on this item?
Yes, Andrew Becker.
Thank you. First, I would like to, you know, publicly apologize to the staff consultant for, there was never an intention to question integrity or an individual's work that they've done for the city. To Councilmember Freitas's point, it is transparency. And when you see, what you see here in, in this report, it gives you a snapshot of what's happening within the city and where possibly inefficiencies are or inadequacies. And I would say that any staff consultant that is, that is working fifteen hours, fifteen days in a row, and is invoicing a hundred and forty-four hours out of those fifteen days in a row, some of those days being up to seventeen hours a day, it speaks to the greater need in our community and the, frankly, lack of historic support for this incredible, incredible program need. And I, I think that it's a little bit, you know, I don't think that it makes sense to fly to Washington and meet with federal representatives and say, what can we do? How can we capitalize? How can we build? How can we grow? When you're then looking at saying, well, we are paying one staff consultant to work fifteen days in a row, up to seventeen hours a day. I mean, what that mentally does to a person is gonna reflect in the work to some degree. And in all honesty, it's a representation of a lack of support for our CDBG, PLHA, CDBG CV, and a lot of our other HUD and housing successor dollars. And I have personally met and worked with Ms. House, and I believe that she is an incredibly knowledgeable and skilled person, but it's just that, one person. And so, you know, I apologize for the lengthy comments tonight, but I also was the one who questioned some of these numbers. And when you look at these historic invoices, it's scary to see that for fifteen years, one individual was expected to carry this workload at this level alone. And so, understanding that there is a fiscal impact to our city, but deficiencies lead to greater impacts. And so I hope that we can use this as a learning lesson and a toolkit to support where staff wants to go and how we can grow our housing department and our CDBG in particular. Thank you.
All right, thank you, any other public comment?
We have no other public comment.
All right, do we have a motion on this item Q for warrants?
The motion is a receive and file.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, it is a receive and file. A motion, receive and file?
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
All right, second?
A second.
Let's cast your votes.
And passes four zero.
All right, public hearing, item number six, Vineyard Crossing Project.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor and City Council. The project applicant, Bright Sky Residential, is seeking approval of a vesting tentative subdivision map, design review, and density bonus for the Vineyard Crossing project. The project includes the development of forty-five single-family homes with forty accessory dwelling units and fifty-two duplex units. Thirteen of the accessory dwelling units would be deed-restricted affordable units. The project is located on Oakley Road, directly west of Phillips Lane.
Nathan Sinclair.
Associate planner will provide a staff report for the project.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm gonna move quickly through this, given the time, but happy to answer any questions at the conclusion of the presentation. There are three actions that we're recommending you take tonight for the Vineyard Crossing project. Approval of a vesting tentative map, approval of design review, and approval of a density bonus application. The project site, it consists of two parcels totaling approximately fourteen and a half acres located near Oakley Road and Phillips Lane. It currently contains a vineyard, electrical transmission towers, and a paved walking trail. The site is part of the Almond Ridge South Plan Development District that was entitled in nineteen ninety-one, but only partially developed since that time. And as part of the city's two thousand and three general plan, the western project parcel was designated medium-low density residential, and the eastern parcel was designated medium-density residential. The project includes forty-five single-family homes, forty accessory dwelling units on the single-family lots, as well as fifty-two duplex units. Thirteen units, which are proposed to be accessory dwelling units, would be deed-restricted as affordable to households earning sixty percent of area median income in order to obtain a density bonus of up to twenty percent additional units, as well as waivers from certain development standards, which are described further in your staff report. The proposed vesting tentative map would subdivide the project site into seventy-one individual lots, as well as fifty-two condominium lots on the eastern parcel. The applicant has indicated that they intend to own and operate the entire development as rental housing. Moving on to the project design, to provide variation, the project offers three different single-family floor plans and three different architectural styles, traditional, farmhouse, and craftsman. And this slide shows the two different duplex elevation styles, as well as the proposed recreation center and leasing office building, which also fits the style of the overall development. And the project complies with applicable objective design standards. Landscaping would be provided throughout the project site. And the project also features a small recreation center, pool, and a children's play area, as well as an activity lawn on its east parcel. The project's environmental review was performed based on Section 15183 of the SEQA guidelines. This community plan exemption allows that for a project consistent with an existing community plan or general plan, additional environmental review is not required except as might be necessary to examine whether there are project-specific significant effects. And the analysis concluded that all impacts associated with the project were adequately addressed in the general plan environmental impact report, and therefore, the project does not require further SEQA review. At its October first meeting, the Antioch Planning Commission adopted a resolution recommending that the city council approve the vesting tentative map, design review, and density bonus application for the project. And staffer likewise making that recommendation. Thank you, and happy to take your questions.
All right, thank you. Do we have a proponent who is going to speak on this project? Is the proponent, yes? Yeah.
I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, perfect, so that's the-
I have a presentation.
You'll have ten minutes to make a presentation?
Perfect.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Bernal and council members. My name is Jessica Hidari, and I am pleased to be here as the project manager on behalf of the applicant, Bright Sky Residential, for the Vineyard Crossing project. We do have the developer here and some of the consultants here that have helped us get to where we are today. Nathan did a great job covering a lot of project details, and I know, you know, we're all getting tired here tonight, so I'll try to make this brief. I'd like to take a quick moment just going over some of the project benefits. Here's a list of amenities that we provide for the future residents of Antioch and the city of, sorry, I'm tired right now. For the city, for the residents of Vineyard Crossing. Vineyard Crossing is a unique build-for-rent community, offering an array of product types at different rent structures and provides state-of-the-art amenities inclusive to all residents of the project. In our community outreach efforts, we added access points from the development up to the existing multi-use trail at the north end of the project. We added Wi-Fi into the rec building available for all residents of the project, as well as security cameras on-site. We also reached out to Antioch PD to see how we can partner with the Neighborhood Watch program. As I'm sure you're all aware, California is in a housing crisis. Only an estimated fifteen to seventeen percent can afford to buy a home right now here in California, based on current reports, that's a problem. Our goal is to provide much-needed housing, which will keep residents here in Antioch. Our project will serve the missing middle and give workforce families an opportunity to rent a home without the cost and burden of homeownership that many families cannot afford. I fall in this bucket, I'm a renter, I have a young family, and a project like this is ideal in our case, just as it is for many other families. The project will also help the city reach the RENA numbers. And as you see here, we are SB three thirty compliant, as we comply, we're consistent with the general plan land use designation, but the site has been designated and planned for the density that we're proposing, so we're happy to provide that. Vineyard Crossing will deed-restrict thirteen eighty U's for low-income households, limited to households earning sixty percent of the area median income. As mentioned, all residents will have access to the amenities, so this includes the affordable units. The deed restriction will remain for fifty-five years. If you're not familiar with Bright Sky, I highly recommend, and if you haven't already, check out their website, I think you'd be really impressed with the communities they build. And I think Antioch would be proud to have another Bright Sky project here in Antioch. Bright Sky leads in the build-for-rent sector. They develop, own, and manage purpose-built, highly amenitized, build-for-rent communities here in California and throughout select markets nationwide. You might be familiar with Laurel Ranch here in Antioch, consisting of two hundred and sixteen two-story townhomes, and there's also nearby similar product communities in Lathrop and Vacaville that we'd love to invite you out. Come tour, see how it lives, feels, is managed. Bright Sky is very involved with- Bright Sky is very involved with their projects and has an exclusive relationship with their property management group, ensuring high-quality management and operation. So they're really, they really dig their heels deep into the entire process. But beyond that, this is, you know, long-term, to be managed long-term by Bright Sky, and that's the intent with this project. So what does this mean for Vineyard Crossing? It means a clean, well-maintained community. It means eyes on the community. It means the rules and regulations required by the city be upheld. Finally, and to kind of wrap this up, I want to highlight again the unique product and opportunity that Vineyard Crossing offers. Renting versus buying, clearly, housing affordability is an issue, right? The cost of homeownership realistically is not attainable for all. The cost of a mortgage, interest rates, taxes, insurance, it's a lot. So renting a single-family detached, an ADU, a duplex here at Vineyard Crossing, provides a sense of homeownership with the quality, maintenance-free living standards, twenty-four-seven onsite management, access to amenities. Build-for-rent improves the stability for the community. For instance, longer tendencies equal stronger neighborhoods. We're gonna see increased housing supply, improved rental standards, and revitalizes underused land. So what I just want to say, thank you so much. Thank you for making it this late to hear us out. We truly hope that you can support and approve this project tonight. Thank you, staff, for taking so much time to work hand-in-hand on this project. We really, truly believe it's, you know, high-quality, a great opportunity with this project. And we're here for any questions. We have our consultants, and we'd like to address any public comments if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have an opponent to the project? Yes?
Ralph Hernandez. I am opposed to the subdivision, to what is before you. Item number six. It consists of a hundred and thirty-seven residential units total. Some are apartments, some are single-family homes. Fourteen and a half acres. In the packet, you will see some of the existing surrounding residents who already wrote and opposed it. One of the main things they point out is public safety. They point out about the rising crime in our community. See, I'm not just out here just yakking or condemning what the city has or has not done. These are the realities of what Antioch is facing and has been facing. This will just add more responsibility to the city. We can talk about how much they are gonna contribute to the city budget. Talk about fire department. We can talk about this one and that one to the school district. It does nothing, really, to support the idea of having a safer and less dangerous Antioch community. The development, sure, they'll sell it. Sure, there'll be some rents there. Sure, there'll be a management person onboard. But that person is not a sworn officer. Something happened on the property, you're gonna call the police department. So it requires additional residents to our community. It requires more police ultimately. It requires, if we're gonna look at Shangri-La that you just saw, presentation of, it requires that none of them will commit crimes. None of, none of them will be impacted, negatively impacted, our community. We talk about what monies they're gonna give to our general fund. Well, already, our city councils, our city staff misspent the decades of money that were given to the budget. You can't even pay the pension fund, which is what, two-hundred million dollars in debt? How can you brag about what is coming to the city with additional residential development? They got you, guys. They got you. You guys just shovel the money in their direction. You guys just ignore public safety here in Antioch. I know, you guys, you guys don't like to hear this. I understand that. And I understand that they, the developers, they, the development, they have to make money. But they're making money off of us. And whatever misery these developments, additional developments, come with, we, the community, suffer. We, our business districts, suffer. Our schools overcrowded, our highways overcrowded. It takes longer to go to work and to come back home from work. You know, we can talk about, I don't know how much money, because she didn't address that. How much are you, you, the development, gonna give to the city? But see, the problem is that some of these monies, the impact fees, that you are requiring them to pay, they are not long-term. The developments are short-term gains with long-term financial consequences to us and our budget. And the consequences increase as you develop and accept more and more developments and more and more people. I've said it for decades up here. Nineteen eighty-eight, nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-four, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and fifteen, these past several years. I told you, the more development, the more stresses and crime comes to our community. You have to protect all of us who have invested in Antioch. The businesses, you have to protect them as much as possible from crime. Our officers do not deserve having to go out, and you not provided, providing adequate number of officers. Of course, none of you have worked law enforcement. You don't know the stresses that officers go, go through out there. You don't know the anxieties. You don't know the long hours that developments create and cause. This is just another, maybe, you know, you can look at it and see, well, it's not very many. It's only a hundred and thirty-seven units. It's not gonna have any impact. Sure it does, because you've added to all of the other ones. And we just went through consent item number M. Look, look at the impacts that's gonna have. You don't charge enough to developers, as the public was told over the years, over the decades, that development was gonna pay its own way. No, our city council, our city staff, over the years, have allowed them, allowed them to get off the hook and make millions, hundreds of millions of dollars. But we, the public here, we are the ones that suffer. We are the ones that they leave the consequences. Well, they take their money and they go somewhere else, and they make hundreds of millions of dollars more. No, you have to learn how to say no until we get a handle on what's happening in our community. You know, don't look to campaign, campaign contributors. Don't look to the ones that take you out to lunch. You know, you should, you should really go for ride-alongs and see what true crime is. You should go and, and use the simulation activator that'll show you what some of the circumstances that the officers engage in. You should go to some of the businesses that have been victimized, that have been ripped off, people that have been robbed, coming in here. They've shot and killed a couple here that I'm aware of, here in Antioch. You know? People that have contributed, invested in our community, what the city has brought in with more and more and more residents. I remember when I moved here, nineteen seventy-five, by the way, and I bought a home here. I remember we had maybe sixty-five thousand population. Last count, we're at a hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred population. What did you think, that, that the money they give you, the short-term, short-term money that they give you is good? And that will make our city safe? No, you have failed. You, I'm talking about past city council and staff also. You have failed to maintain a safe and non-dam, less dangerous community. Because of the overgrowth, one aspect, because of the overgrowth, we have become a very dangerous community. You've got people leaving because they can't stand it anymore. You've got people that don't want to go to our shops because of the crime, because of being assaulted, because of being robbed. You know, I told you earlier that our crime index is two ninety-two versus a hundred nationally. We've gotten to the point where a person here in Antioch, you have a chance of one out of twenty-four being victimized. And it's not getting lower in the sense of safer. We are forty-eight percent higher than the national average of our residents and people coming into Antioch being victimized. Your priority, unfortunately, which I hope to keep harping at you, and maybe now you will find out what I mean, if you really think about it, is the more residents you bring in, and the less officers we have, which we have around forty-five less than what we should have, you're gonna have crime. You're gonna have crime. The criminals out there, they know we can't protect the residents. I, I, I compliment our, our current police force because they're doing what they can, but they're in danger too. Thank you.
Could I please get a motion to extend this meeting to midnight? We don't, we don't have to use all of it, but we can at least, don't have to keep extending it.
Reluctantly.
We have to, we... We only, we only went to eleven, we only went to eleven-thirty, so we have to extend it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we extend to twelve-fifteen.
All right. A motion till twelve-fifteen, I'll second.
I'll second.
Please catch your vote.
Motion passes four zero.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we have five public comment cards submitted, but may have additional. Richard, sorry, Mark Richard, Eric Haynes, Perry Ragusson.
Thought you guys were kicking us out of here.
We're having too much fun.
My issue with this project going on, on Phillips Lane, I live on the other side of Phillips Lane. Phillips Lane is the wild, wild west, you know? That, that is a long straightaway, and it descends downhill. I had to borrow a friend of mine's, a friend of a friend's radar gun to see what speeds are they driving? Me and my son got up on the ladder. They're flying hundred and fifteen miles an hour. One fifteen. You got even old ladies driving fifty, sixty miles an hour. The speed zone is twenty-five miles an hour. It's not safe, you know? We had, this year alone, we had a car that lost control that was racing down that street, and the car exploded like it was in Beirut. It was four or five fire trucks out there trying to put out flames thirty feet in the air, because the tank blew up. We had another car run into a house on Phillips Lane, you know? So before we do the project, let's fix, I'm okay with the project, let's fix Phillips Lane. You know, the road was there long before anybody did anything, but that road, that road is death alley. Some, somebody's gonna die out there. It's gonna be somebody's kid. It's not gonna be my kid, because I don't allow him to cross that street or go to that park over there. He beats me up, but I told him, I gotta take care of you till you're eighteen. You're not gonna die on Phillips Lane. We have to fix that road. You know, it's, it's too long of a straightaway. It's downhill, you know? Yeah, they do donuts there all the time, but the donuts don't bother me. It's hundred and fifteen miles an hour in a twenty-five mile an hour zone. You know, that's, and the police can't be out there all the time. I understand that. We gotta put roundabouts, speed bumps, big bumps. We have to figure out how to slow down traffic, you know? Somebody's gonna die, you know? Then we're gonna be, you know, prayers and we're sorry, and we know about it. I talked to neighbors that live on the other side. He said, Mark, you've only been here twelve years. We've been here thirty, twenty-five years this has been going on. You know, it's the Indianapolis Five Hundred, you know? They have lookouts. We get up on the ladder. They got kids with binoculars watching for cops on Eighteenth Street and up on Oakley Road. You know, that, it's, it's their own raceway. And before we put this project in, we need to fix Phillips Lane. The project is fine, but you gotta fix Phillips Lane unless you're gonna have some deaths, you know? We are, I know you guys seen the videotape of the car blowing up, the car running into the house, you know? It's crazy out there. So we need to fix Phillips Lane. Thank you.
Eric Hayes, Perry Raguzzi, and Adrian.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council. Eric Haynes, Business Representative with Sheet Metal Workers Local 104. I'm here tonight representing over four hundred Antioch households who are members of my union and those families that make their living as electricians, sprinkler fitters, and plumbers. It is no secret to this council that even working families with good-paying union jobs have a hard time buying a single-family home. Vineyard Crossings offers another option. It offers families a single-family home in a rental community at an attainable price. Vineyard Crossing will include thirteen deed-restricted, deed-restricted affordable homes priced for occupancy by households earning no more than sixty percent of the area median income for Contra Costa County. Our unions are leaders in incorporating new building technologies to help address environmental challenges we are facing. Vineyard Crossings is an all-electric community designed to minimize the negative environmental and climate impacts generated by reliance on fossil fuels. Every home will be equipped with active solar infrastructure, and each resident in the community will share in savings from participation in the solar program. The project will, will be built by local labor, earning family-supporting wages. Young Antioch workers will have the opportunity to be employed as apprentices on this project, which ties into our progressive leadership for new technologies, our training centers. Some of you have toured them. Are phenomenal. This is a win-win project. Please support it. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Perry Ragusa. Thirty-three years, lived off of Almond Ridge Park. I see the vineyards all the time, walk my dog down Phillips Street. The gentleman is absolutely right. It's chaos out there. You've got a lot more problems than that out there, though. You've got motorcycle racing going on in the park while children are trying to play. You've got people doing donuts right next to the park while there's parties going on in the park. You know, when is this gonna stop? We were promised the same thing that I'm told here today, three, four years ago, when the other rental properties went up between Phillips and Highway Four. Things got a lot worse. I'm wondering just how much worse it's gonna get. That's really all I have to say. That's really all I have to say.
Good evening, Mayor and, uh, council members. Uh, I'm here to speak in support of the project. I am a, I'm here speaking for myself and my fellow, uh, union trade members that have to be up at 4:00 in the morning tomorrow and every other day of the week to do the long commute to the Bay Area to be able to afford to live in this nice town, at least on my side. Uh, this project will oper- give the opportunity to residents like myself and others to work locally, uh, given us time to spend, uh, with our families. I know my kids would appreciate having their father in an extra two hours a day, right, to play with. Uh, this project gives, uh, the building trade apprenticeship program, uh, the ability to provide training hours to, uh, apprentices, local apprentices, right? Uh, strengthening our, uh, the generation of future skilled, uh, tradespeople. Additionally, it ensures fair wages, healthcare, retirement benefits, and, uh, supports local families and its community. So, I'll keep it short. Thank you for your time and, uh, I hope, uh, to have your support.
Andrew Becker.
Thank you. Um, considering the robust community engagement at 11:41, I would start by saying that in the future, I would make a recommendation to suspend the rules and move a public hearing to, towards the beginning of the meeting so that individuals aren't here at midnight. Um, you know, somebody would be, yeah. Uh, but that's, you know, the business, right? Uh, I, I will say, though, that, you know, um, I think that there are inadequacies out in that community, uh, out in that area that need to be addressed. Um, and I think that that's the situation probably a lot of communities in our city. Um, to residents that are here, you know, there are street calming measures that you can reach out to Public Works Department for and, uh, get your street on that list, uh, in hopes that you can get some calming measures out there. To our council and staff, they're working on this impact fee nexus study and hopefully, like the city of Concord, will have traffic impact fees included that will be able to mitigate these, uh, effects. I don't think that it's fair to necessarily blame one developer for that. You know, I would say that, you know, um, community members by and large don't like new developments coming in, uh, adjacent to their communities sometimes, um, not understanding that their community was new at one time as well. And so, you know, I think that we have to figure out what our general plan is, um, how that all comes together cohesively and how we could support. Uh, you know, for the individuals that are saying Phillips Lane is a raceway right now, you know, it's a good thing that we didn't get that Highway 4 Phillips Lane interchange because then you would have people racing to the freeway. And, uh, you know, this is a catalyst project that hopefully is gonna continue to spill south of Oakley Road and build out towards BART. So, individuals are gonna be able to get in their cars and drive two minutes to the BART station instead of having to circumvent 10 minutes through our community streets. Um, but how does that happen? Through these infill and, uh, urban limit line developments. You know, this project is not a traditional single-family community. This is a, um, entry-level access for a lot of community members out there. You know, when I worked Uber a few years ago, I picked up a family of six that was living in a two-bedroom apartment and I took them across town to the water park because the pool didn't work in their apartment complex. And now we have an opportunity to not just put a family into a home that fits their needs and has amenities on site, but they also have a backyard instead of a patio, right? You have an opportunity to address the community's needs on a larger level. And I would say to the city for individuals that say, well, gosh, this just doesn't hit the affordable need that we have. I agree, I think that we need to continue to go further. I think this fits a need that is there and exists and we take this model and the single-family rental model and we then target state and federal funds that allow us to build communities like this and deed-restrict them across the board. But that vision wouldn't have been possible unless a developer like this brought the model. So, instead of constantly looking at something and saying, what are the negatives that we can find in it? I think we need to look at something and say, what are the benefits to our community? And then how can we continue to build off of it? I mean, for a developer to come in and say, this is a rental community that's gonna have a heated resort-style pool? Tell me the last time you had a rental project like that here in the city of Antioch. Community that, I mean, that they've, they've gone for a density bonus and deed-restricted units at a 60% AMI. That's phenomenal. You have developers that don't wanna do density bonuses because they don't wanna deed-restrict, deed-restrict projects. And then you have a developer that says, we wanna build this and we wanna stay with it long-term. We wanna be connected to it. You had a developer that bought them all 12 years ago and went through a whole process of re-entitling it and then put it on the market two weeks ago to sell it for $50 million. So, I, I support this project and I appreciate the developer, uh, staying this late and in this engaged. And I hope that we can use this as a model that we can go ahead and replicate across the city and bring additional affordable and missing middle housing. Thank you.
So, I just wanna show you, I just, uh, that's fine. You don't have to be recognized. But, um, just for the rec, there's a pointer up here. Okay. Sorry. Um, for the record, um, I was watching this, the person that represents the developer, taking notes as people complained about Phillips Lane. The last two developers that came in front of you, all they cared about themselves, it was apparent in their verbiage and their body language. And here, she came up here and she says, we wanna do this. She was very pro-Antioch, I think. I actually think the, I wish they were building homes with 60% AMI. The only, the way to make this project better is she had them for sale instead of rent. Maybe I'm, I sell homes for a living, so maybe that's my self-interest, but we need this in Antioch, whether it's a rental or a purchase. And I would like to see Bright Sky buy that $50 million Somersville project and, um, put some affordable homes on it and some, what's it called? Molten, I'm too tired, it's too late. What's it called? Work, live workspaces. That would be amazing. I am for this project, I just wish it was for sale instead of for rent.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's, uh, great to be here this late. Um, I do have some things to say about this, uh, namely, I, I live in an ADU myself. Um, it's the only thing I can afford. It's pretty much the most affordable, um, housing option for someone like me, especially someone who needs to live close to family. Um, so it allows me to get out of my house that I grew up in and maybe just a couple doors down is just far enough away. Um, that said, uh, my landlord isn't able to, by Antioch code, rent both the main property and the ADU out to tenants that aren't related either by blood or marriage, as I understand it. Um, yet, we're gonna have this corporation come in here and do this at 20 times that scale, more even? How do they get to skirt these laws regarding what units on a single-family lot with an ADU get to get rented out while my landlord doesn't have that option and they're in violation? That's one of the questions I have. Um, I do have a moral kind of gripe with, uh, an entire build-to-rent community of single-family residences. Um, I'm not a fan of the minimum setbacks. Uh, these might as well be patios, you can barely get a garbage can through, you could probably throw toilet paper to your neighbor's house when they need it, uh, because they're gonna only be eight or 10 feet away from you. Um, it gets you the separation of not sharing walls unless you're living in the duplexes, which I tend to like the duplexes. I'd like to see more of those versus the ADUs in a situation like this. Obviously, I'd, I'd like the opportunity to buy a house. I don't think that's coming for me anytime soon. Um, I can understand that this is transitional for a lot of people and that it helps get them in a better spot, but, uh, having gone to prior meetings, understanding that, you know, some of these are gonna be affordable, but, uh, to a great degree, I don't think these are gonna be affordable for Antioch residents. I think these are gonna be affordable for people fleeing the Bay Area, looking for just a little bit more space, looking for maybe a little bit more relief in housing costs. But I don't think that the benefits are gonna necessarily, um, be to people who have been in Antioch for a long time, um, in that regard. Uh, I worry about the affordability. Right now, you can have two people working what I consider would be a good minimum wage job at McDonald's 40 hours a week, 50 weeks a year. They together would combine for $80,000 of gross income. Assuming that these ADUs, uh, which I believe are one or maybe two bedrooms, these folks would not be able to, uh, qualify, assuming they had to meet that three times the rent in gross income, should that ADU be more than, um, $2,200? Right now, a one-bedroom in Brentwood with luxury is about $2,500, meaning you need to qualify, uh, with $90,000 of gross income yearly. Now, Councilmember Rocha, I'm pretty sure you're familiar with, uh, the starting rate for a new teacher in the district. It's far off that mark. And if you have a family or you have other debts, it's still not really gonna be affordable. So, I say this. Simply expanding the housing supply isn't predicate to improving the housing crisis. I'd like to see more guardrails on this project. I'd like to see more affordability if possible, um, any way we can. I don't know if we have the time for that tonight, but these are my thoughts. I don't wanna get a slippery slope of having all of these developers getting, you know, money signs on their eyes saying, yes, we can rent out land to people in perpetuity, uh, you can rent the American dream, is what somebody said on 60 Minutes, uh, in the past couple years, uh, with regard to corporate ownership, uh, large-scale corporate ownership of housing. So, I, I take this pretty seriously. Thank you.
We have no other speakers to this item.
All right, if the, um, applicant would like to, you may do a five-minute rebuttal. You don't, okay.
Charles Mckay, Bright Sky Residential. Uh, it's late, we all know that. I'm not gonna burden you with a bunch of time. Uh, more than anything, we'd like to just thank, uh, staff for the effort they put in working with us on this project, um, as well as the other one that we've got now under construction over on Laurel Road. Um, it's been a long time, uh, working with staff. We've gone through, went through a PDP process, went through an FDP process, we came back, we've done it again. Um, we're thrilled to be here, have the opportunity to bring this before you tonight. Um, and appreciate all of the comments, uh, both, both in favor of and those who have concerns about this community. Um, we are very excited for the opportunity to bring a unique living opportunity to the city of Antioch. Um, and we have a, a combined primary and ADU program that's, uh, open for leasing in January in Vacaville. And it's been an amazing experience watching people who could not afford to live in a single-family home have the lifestyle at a price point they can afford. Um, we're excited to bring the same program here to Antioch. And, uh, again, just really wanna, um, reinforce our excitement to partner with the city. We're here for the long term because we believe in the city of Antioch's future. Uh, we look forward to having residents, uh, come in and become part of this community in our community. And, uh, we really, uh, are appreciative of the, of the community's support thus far. Um, and, uh, I'm happy to answer any question the council may have about the community. Um, really just wanna thank you for your time. And, uh, anyone who knows me well knows that me keeping it short is very difficult. So, I'm gonna stop myself right there and give you the opportunity to ask me questions if you'd like.
All right, thank you. Uh, without any more public comment, uh, I will close the public hearing. I think I had, didn't ever opened it, so, all right, um, any, I'm sorry. Any, uh, any questions or comments from council?
I, I do have a question. Um, there's 137 residential units. What is the square footage between the single-family, the, uh, ADUs, and the duplexes? I don't care who answers.
I know the ADUs are about 730 square feet. I wanna say the duplexes, I'm trying to pull up the exact number, is around 1,500 square feet. And I believe the single-family was maybe slightly larger than that.
Yes, it, the, uh, ADUs are 730. Um, the duplexes are 1350, and then there's a 1550 plan. And then the, uh, single-families go from 13 up to, uh, 1632. So, a continuum of, of product that kinda gets us from price points from sort of very entry to, uh, to up there a bit. But again, if, from a pricing standpoint, uh, we always try to be a couple thousand dollars less than the cost of ownership of, of a, a, uh, entry-level home in any community we're in.
So, Mr. Mayor, um, on this subject, the, the speakers who talk, talked about Phillips Lane are absolutely, actually, you, you were, you were very nice to be very blunt about it. Uh, as a lifelong resident, Phillips Lane has always been the wild, wild west, you know, for the past 70 years. And so, I, I really think that there needs to be a coordinated effort between Public Works and the Police Department, working with some of the committee and individuals who are here who have expressed concerns about it and come up with a solution. It, it, you know, it is terrible out there and it's only going to get worse. When I look at level of service for cars being at F, that concerns me. It's the, it's the worst standard that we can have. And so, I, I think these citizens that came forward, their concern is legitimate. And I think the, the city has ignored it for way too long. So, if we can try to truly move that forward. Um, I would, I probably have a million questions, but the nice thing about being late is I'm tired. So, I, I, if there's no other questions or comments, I'm ready to make a motion.
Staff, Councilmember Wilson.
Uh, just a quick comment and one quick question. So, uh, I had the opportunity to visit your site in Vacaville because I had some concerns about the ADU, the proximity of the ADU to the large house. And the ADU does have a lot of privacy. The other house doesn't look onto it. So, there was a lot of things about the community. I saw the duplexes. I thought it was a great, so I was happy I'd made that journey up there to see it. So, thank you for allowing me to do so. My next question, I think I ask a lot of developers about this. I see a lot of foliage and plants. Are these native and drought-tolerant?
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Um, a lot of the plants are native and drought-tolerant. They were actually designed to mostly be drought-tolerant. You can't put a lot of native plant species next to non-native plant species, um, for irrigation purposes. So, there's a lot of, we, we relooked at the plans to make sure that there were a lot of native plant species, which you will see incorporated into that.
Okay, I, I just ask because sometimes, and I think developers are getting a little bit better, uh, they'll pick a plant that's pretty and it's not necessarily native, drought-tolerant. Sometimes it's invasive species, so I, I like to ask about that. And it sounds like, um, a lot of these, and somebody's gonna have to correct, probably Scott's gonna correct my terminology, the, where you have the foliage has the permeable that collects the groundwater.
Yeah, um, so, correct, so...
Did I say that right, Scott?
Permeable.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Um, I, I wish our landscape architect was here to speak a little bit better about that, but there is permeable areas to collect drainage, um, with the water. As I agree, I, I think that's the right way to describe that.
Aren't there two catch basins?
There are two catch basins, yes. So, all of, yeah, we'll be treating all the water on-site. Um, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just wanted to, um, make one comment. Um, when I, when I saw the presentation, one of the things that I, I, I recognized was SB 330. And I just wanted to share... wanted to share with the community, because this will be coming up often, I just want to make sure the community understands what Senate Bill 330 speaks to. SB 330, the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, is a California law designed to speed up housing development by removing barriers in the approval process. Its key provisions include allowing developers to vest their project under current rules by submitting a preliminary application, limiting local governments from downzoning or imposing moratoriums, and requiring timely and fair processing of housing permits. The act was extended from its original expiration date of January 1 of 2025 to January 1 of 2030 by Senate Bill 8. The reason why I bring that up is I just want to make sure that the public understands, and it'll come up time and time again, that with the new legislation addressing the crisis, housing crisis that we have in California, that this law was enacted to be able to provide housing in this crisis that we're faced with. And so it's taken away local authority in many ways for us to be able to make decisions about whether we want to proceed forward with the project or deny it. I just want to make sure that people understand that. There are some projects here that come forward that I'm not going to be thrilled about, and the language speaks to what we are required to do as local government. This particular project, I am happy to see what you presented, and I do think it brings value to our community and provides opportunities for families that start out. You know, one of the gentlemen that spoke knows that I was an educator for years, and teacher salaries aren't the best that they should be. And when I first started, I was a teacher. My wife and I struggled to get into our first home. And so giving people the opportunity to be able to have the experience of having a residence so they can get started as a young couple or as an individual, single person, with the vision of having one day, you know, their own home, I think this is a step in the right direction. So I'm in favor of this particular project. There will be some coming forward that I may not be so thrilled about, but I just want to make sure that the public is aware of Senate Bill 330. And when the presentation went up, I saw that up on the board, and that is a language that speaks to the state of California requiring housing development to meet the needs of the state, the crisis that ran the state of California. But I am in favor of the project. I like what I saw, what was presented tonight. So thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, and I'd just like to say, I got an opportunity, as you know, to go see your Manteca project, and I was really impressed with the quality of the materials you used, the landscape maintenance, the masonry wall. As one of our commenters said, the resort-style pool and the clubhouse is all really, really nice. And so I've been telling folks that this can be one of the nicest maintained communities in all of Antioch, just because it is going to be maintained under one ownership. And so I'm just really excited to see how this project's going to turn out. You know, I'm hoping that it's going to be everything that you're committing to and expect it to be. And I think this will be something of what we're going to see more of in the future. And so I think you also, you didn't mention it, but you have one of the largest property management companies in the world that manages the properties, so it's very well financed and funded. So I'm excited about to see what this project's going to come out like. And again, just expecting it to be a really high-end project for years and years to come. So thank you for that. With that, do we have anybody who'd like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve this item for Vineyard Crossing Project to be approved.
All right. We have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there just one, just one motion on this thing, on the resolution? All right, please cast your votes.
Thank you. Motion passes 4-0 with Councilmember Torres Walker. Excuse.
All right. Awesome. We are on a roll. So we are now to the council regular agenda item at 12:04. Item number seven, geologic hazard abatement districts.
Director Bunting is here. Sorry, I don't have any more energy.
Good morning. Oh, I'm right. On June 24th, City Council approved a resolution declaring the city subject to a geologic hazard abatement district law. Eric Harwell with NGO is here to give a brief presentation about the GAD.
Welcome, Eric. Thanks for hanging with us.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. And I get to say good morning, Mayor and council members, too, which is something I've not done for a while, so that's good. Do we have the slide? There we go. So I understand the time of the council and want to respect that. We would definitely, I'll go through this. Please answer, ask me questions during the presentation. After, if you see something, stop me. I really want to make sure your questions get answered on this. And so please go. Geologic hazard abatement districts are a community group that form together to take care of land issues, and we're talking about land issues, which is movement of earth within a designated area. In this case, usually a development will subject itself to a GAD. There are approximately 50 of them in California. There's a lot more developments within those 50 GADS because GADS can annex areas into them once they're formed. So there may be approximately 50 GADS, but there's probably more like close to 80 or 90 developments within GADS in California. GADS have been around since the 1980, in fact, 1979, the Beverly Act was passed that created GADS. It's a California-only entity, so you won't find GADS in Wisconsin or New York or any place else. But it does allow communities to group together. It was first established for the Abalone Cove landslide in Southern California, where homes were moving into the ocean due to a large, deep-seated landslide, and it gave the homeowners a community, a group, a state-level entity that allowed them to group together and have resources to tackle these problems. GADS were formed in '79, the law. The first GAD that was for a new development was in 1985 here in Contra Costa County. So GADS, 40 years of having a GAD for a new development. So that is not a new item to have a GAD for a new development. It's been in place for, it's been in place for 45 years. So geologic hazards, we usually think of them as landslides, erosion. Under GAD law, it's any movement of soil, natural or unnatural. So it gives the GAD quite a bit of leeway on how they can tackle these issues. The GAD is an independent state-level agency. Back in June, when you subjected the city of Antioch to GAD law, that was just to allow a GAD to be formed by this local, by the city council. So that's what it did. Any entity, a city or county that forms a GAD, has to do the same thing. It's just a precursor to actually forming a GAD. GADS have a number of benefits for geologic hazard abatement. They're a specialized entity. They're made up of personnel, geologists, engineers, and contractors to quickly react to geologic hazards. GADS can also, within a development, have land ownership and have land ownership duties as a responsible landowner. They're a state-level entity, and some of the advantages that they have are they're not subject to local permitting, allows them to, and they're not subject to LAFCO. It allows them to respond, be formed, and respond quickly to geologic hazards. So GADS are, what GADS are mainly, hopefully do, is to prevent geologic hazards. They do that by monitoring maintenance, and then if there is an event, they have capabilities for emergency response. So there's, they're a preventive agency where they're out monitoring things a lot of people don't pay attention to. They monitor concrete line ditch, just slopes, detention basins, bioretention cells, all those things that don't generally get looked at a lot on a development. They're not the entry feature, the landscaping, or things like that. GADS are a specialized entity, and that's where their beauty comes in, is kind of taking care of things a lot of times nobody else is really interested in there. How do you form a GAD in California? Like I said, back in June, you did the first part, which is to subject the city of Antioch to GAD law. The GAD can be formed in a couple of ways, in a resolution by the city council or by a petition of landowners within the proposed district. Once that happens, the city council, in this case, would determine if the board structure. Board structure is important, and GAD law allows two different methods for this. One is the members of the city council sit as the GAD Board of Directors as an independent state-level agency. The second form that also occurs is that five property owners within the district act as a public board. They're elected under California election law. They are public officials, and they manage the district. So those are the two options that are available under GAD law. The board, once it's placed, whether it be city council members or a property owner board, will have to appoint a clerk and a treasurer, and then may appoint other officers as they deem appropriate. This is usually a GAD manager to run the day-to-day operations of the district, and usually a GAD attorney. Those are usually the four positions that come under a GAD. How is a GAD run? A GAD's run by having a plan of control. That's its guidance document. That tells it what's its scope of services and what it can do within that district. So it lays out how it's going to take care of landslide, how it's going to maintain ditches, if it owns land, how it's going to monitor and maintain that. So there's a number of GADS in, like I said, in Contra Costa has a long history of GADS. 1985 with the Black Hawk and Canyon Lakes developments. Those were the first two applied to new developments. So they're, for some of us older people, they're not new, but I'll allow other judgment for younger people if that seems, that seems old or new. Let me just go on this because I know it's late. Funding and allocation. So you have these GAD services. How do you fund them? Almost every, GADS can get money from any state or private agents, private or public funds. Usually, though, they are funded through a Prop 218 vote, and so it becomes an assessment on your tax bill that comes out every year and due in December, well, November and February. So you'll have those payments twice a year. So that's the general funding source for GADS. It is done on a Prop 218 vote. For a new development, this is done as you're forming the GAD after the board approves the plan of control. So that will satisfy the funding requirements for this. GADS deal with things, GADS accumulate long-term reserves to deal with landslides with it while they're, while landslides tend to occur relatively infrequently in large-scale earth movement, they tend to be very expensive what they do. So as part of the engineer's report, the GAD takes funding for maintenance and ongoing maintenance and operation, but also collects reserves for long-term events that may happen. So back in the 2022, 2023 winter, we had a GAD in Contra Costa that had about over $10 million in damage. They had the reserves to take care of that. So there are, there can be large-scale events that GADS do happen. They happen luckily and frequently, but we get El Nino weather. That can be a part, this is part of that long-term funding model. And I know I'm going through this quickly, but I hope this is okay. There's a lot to GADS, but we'll get through and have any questions. So what happens? How do you, how do you, what would be the timeline for formation of a GAD? You already passed the resolution to subject the city of Antioch to GAD law. The next thing that the city council would get would be a petition to form a GAD and a draft plan of control that showed that there was a geologic hazard within the development. And being, having a geologic hazard doesn't mean you have an unsafe development or anything like that. A development is constructed the same, to the same state-of-the-art standards, regardless of whether it has a GAD or not. A GAD just recognizes the fact that slopes and infrastructure need maintenance over time, and that's so it, it's not like GAD. Some people wonder if a GAD says, I'm in a hazard abatement district, does that mean this is a worse area? No, it just recognizes that long-term, everything needs maintenance, and this allows for those realities. So I go, I don't want to read all these, but public herrings are set to hear for the formation. If there's not a majority protest, the board can form the GAD, and they can also set the board structure, as we talked about earlier. A local, the city council members serving as the GAD board, or appoint five property owners within the district to serve as the GAD board. Following that would be the Prop 218, would be an engineer's report. The board would get to approve the engineer's report, and that would be, go out for a Prop 218 vote. And if that passes, the notice of assessment and assessment diagrams pass, that allows for the long-term funding of the GAD. And then acceptance comes later on after the GAD has accumulated reserves. That's usually approximately a three-year period where the GAD's accumulating reserves to be able to operate, operate what it needs to do for both maintenance, operation, and repair. Prior to that, it is usually a developer-funded activities for the GAD. I'll take a breath now and say, and I hope, any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn, extend to 12:30 AM.
We have a motion to extend to 12:30 AM in a second.
I'll second that.
Just cast your votes.
That was a very brief presentation, but I hope.
The motion to extend has been approved 4-0.
Thank you all for staying late for us. We really appreciate it. We've been on the council agenda a couple of times and been bumped, so thank you. Just real quick, this is Cowan Ranch. This is because we have a creek running through Cowan Ranch. It's called Sand Creek for a reason. We don't want to have a situation in 50 years, 100, this is in perpetuity. People are going to be living there 100 years from now. We want to have a financing tool that's in place to deal with anything that might happen. We have no reason to believe something will happen. And the other factor is that corridor is going to be given over to a preserve. So everybody's going to be responsible for this document that Fish and Wildlife Service approves. They can be that entity. City doesn't have to be that entity to follow all those rules. City will be an owner within this preserve, but not the manager. The GAD can help manage that property. So there's two key functions why this works. I've had two other projects I've worked on with GADS. They're a tool that's very rarely used, but it's a really good tool for this kind of situation. So the reason why we're telling you this, and we feel it's important you know, because we're going to ask you to be the board of the GAD. And so get comfortable with it, ask the technical questions. We are estimating that it's probably going to be around $500 a year to the homeowner. It's included in that 1.9 estimate. And so that's how this fits into the overall picture. But here in the next, you know, six months or so, we'll be coming forward with the organizational documents, and then we'll be asking you to be the board for the GAD.
Mr. Mayor, I have to tell you, when you made your presentation, you made me feel very old because I was the county staff who created in 1985. very old because I was the county staff who created in 1985 the Black Hawk GAD. I was one of, one of the originals. They do work extremely well. With that said, if there are no question, Mr. Mayor, I'll move to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file, a second?
Second.
Just catch your votes.
The motion passes 4-0 with Councilmember Torres Walker. Excuse.
Thank you.
All right, Ron, thank you. Ron, item eight, L Street pathway to transit?
Yes, it's recommended that you all adopt the resolution approving the split, to split the L Street pathway to transit project into two projects. And Director Bunty is here to explain why.
Sure, I'll go fairly fast on this, but so the L Street path to transit project has been something the city's had in mind for a number of years. It got started back, we'll just kind of go through this. 2020, we did award a design contract for the beautification of L Street. The intent at that point was to do the entire reach between the freeway and the river. We secured approximately $1.5 million in funding. And then we had to get to work. We were having a hard time getting additional funding. We worked with Caltrans and was able to minimize the scope of that additional project that was going from the freeway to the river to two segments, from Sycamore to the freeway and then from 10th Street to the river. Being phase one, being able to utilize the 1.5, 1.5 million dollars that we had from the O Bag Two with the city money to, to have a first phase of the project. We then received grant funding through CCTA for $13 million, approximately $13 million that allowed us to start thinking about the second portion of the project. Well, due to, due to constraints with the funding, the first project, we had to get going. We had to get something out to bid. So that project, which we've awarded to E.E. Gilbert, which will be under construction within the next month, is that first phase, the northern and southern portions of it. Since this was all done originally with one consultant onboard to do the design, it's rather awkward now that we have two projects. All this is doing is to, is to split these into the two projects that they're going to be bid out as. One's already going to construction, one we're moving forward with the right of way right now. But bookkeeping-wise, it's becoming very cumbersome to, to deal with the situation that it is right now. So to separate these into two different projects, that's what this is all about, just to separate the, the, the funding of these two projects because it's two different projects just along the same street.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we have Lemuel Del Castillo.
All right, this goes to show how important this topic is for me. I'm here at 12:30. But I want to say it looks like it's too late because the first phase is already on its way, but I had issues as a cyclist. The design of it is sharrows, the one, the exact same one we have at Lone Tree Way that people have died on, have been killed. Unfortunately, it's under construction and I, I hope we could still salvage the second phase to make it a more safe design that would accommodate all road users. Because I wish, well, now it's late, but I wish I would have traveled via bicycle through here, but I can't because I am afraid I will die at L Street. I live just right across Highway Four, all the way to Miravista Hills. I saw you at the park, that's where I live. So if I could have taken my bike here, I would, but it's very dangerous. And I think this phase one, which is unfortunately going to be under construction, is not going to be sufficient. We're just wasting the time of both the motorists and the cyclist because you're going to have these sharrows on phase one. So, but it is what it is. We're going to have this in construction. When I, I'm a former Parks and Rec Commissioner. I, I resigned for personal reasons, but when I was there, I voiced concerns about this project and wasn't put forward in front of the Parks and Rec, which is the Designated Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. But here we are. So I hope in the future, whenever you see any transportation projects, I highly recommend that you, before you approve anything, that you ask for the, the Parks and Rec, which is the BPOC Commission, for their input so that you can properly accommodate, which is Alex, Alex Broome here is a part of. Hopefully that could get their opinion on the suitability for all road users, not just motorists. Because I can tell you, I told you I was a project manager, my background is civil engineering. All the standards that is deemed safe is safe only for one user, the motorist. And if they tell you, because one of the biggest assumption when I, when I saw this design was, oh, it's safe. Why is it safe? If everybody follows the speed limit, it'll be safe. And as you heard from all the public here, nobody follows the speed limit. So your assumption that a design is safe falls apart because that's, the assumption is everyone drives under the speed limit. So I hope for all future transportation projects, you take that into consideration, you really think hard about it, not just motorists, but all road users, pedestrians and cyclists alike. So I can hopefully go to the city council meeting on a bike with some confidence, but I'll live. All right, thank you. Have a good night.
All right, any other public comment?
We have no other public comment.
All right, it's to the council for any questions you might have.
Mr. Mayor, I, this is, I worked when I, before a council member for five years on a community project, made three presentations to the former city council, Monica will remember, working with the Veterans Group, DVG, on the surplus property that we have along this particular corridor. You were city manager. Last time we made a presentation, it was a transition between you and former city manager Con Johnson. And promises after promises after promises were made. And I can tell you, November 2021, there was a meeting with Con Johnson as city manager, Brad Hefenberger, the former assistant city manager, I can never remember her name.
Rosanna Bayanmore.
Rosanna. And a commitment was made mid-November 2020, 2022, that we would have a draft MOU that we could bring to the city council that would involve the, the, we even created a 501(c)(3) group, the Veterans Boulevard Project, so that we could work with the designers and the engineers with regards to the surplus property. There are three parcels. And, you know, we kind of gave up. So this has come back and I would like to suggest, since it's been more than five years, more than three presentations, incredible hundreds, if not thousands of hours, to focus on those, those properties, to do a community project, that we can go forward and do what was promised by the city council back then, staff and former city managers. It is very irritating, five years later, with an economic development project, a beautification project, something that would be historic in our community was that we could never get to first base. Now I'm a council member, so I'm going to fight for this because it's long, long overdue. So in the motion that we have, I would like to work with the city manager and, and work with, you know, J.R. Wilson and, can't think of Patrick, my name, Patrick, Patrick, another gentleman, to bring, you know, what was promised five years ago back to the council for consideration.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, I just want to go back to our two, one of them's still here. It's, is it still too late? Because I'm also concerned about bike safety on, I mean, it's, I'm concerned about bike safety throughout the city, but how we can, you know, either get a lane or get some safe, get something in there to protect the cyclist. Because, you know, the speaker had a point, it's safe for the driver, but not necessarily our cyclist.
So the second phase of this work, that we'll be widening the roadway in front of the high school and between the high school and the fairgrounds, that, that will have separated bike lane in that segment of it. But the segment between Sycamore and the freeway, there's just not enough room in the roadway. That will, there will be sharrows placed in that area at this point. That's, that's the design and, and that's really what we're going, that's really what the intent is for that segment of the roadway. And when we're doing the full widening, we've, we're, we're looking to get enough right of way that we can widen it out to add such things as like the protected bike or the, the separated bike lane.
All right, thank you.
Through the city manager, Scott, I just have one, one question. So this, this project's going on like five years and obviously costs continue to go up. And my concern is that the 21-plus million dollars that's budgeted for this project with fixed grant funding is not going to be enough to build whatever we're looking to build. And so, and then of course, the, anything over would come out of, I expect gas tax or some other city funds. So how confident are you that we're going to be able to stay within budget on this project at this point?
The, the first phase, I'm, I'm very confident. The project's been bid out, so, so I'm good there. The second portion, there is a lot of unknowns. There is right of way that need to be purchased, but working with a consultant, we have been looking at this for a number of years. I am, I'm fairly confident that the money that we have set up, that $20 million, will be enough for us to do that second phase of the project. And if it's not, as soon as we realize that there might be something, we'll come before council and have that discussion, whether it be, it would probably be a Measure J or an RMYA money that we'd be looking to utilize.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion on this?
Mr. Mayor, I will move approval of the attached resolution and directive to staff to work with the Veterans Boulevard representatives and come back and make a presentation to council.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second. Will you please catch your votes?
Thank you. Motion passes 4-0 as amended.
All right, and on, on to our last regular agenda item, item number nine, discussion of the city council meeting that falls on Veterans Day, November the 11th.
Yes, thank you so much. And the staff report actually talked about the entire month of November. So we wanted you all, so we polled you to see if you would agree on the 4th and the 18th or the 4th and the 19th. So you all agreed on the 4th. We just need that second meeting for y'all to agree on when you can come in instead of the 25th.
Was the second one on the 18th?
Or the 19th.
Why are we moving the second meeting?
Because it's two days before Thanksgiving and a lot of the staff are out.
That's happened like every year since I've been my council.
Well, we'll put two weeks between them, right? You go the 4th and the 18th, right?
For me, I can do the 4th and the 19th, but cannot do the 2nd.
Yeah, I'm unable to do the 18th as well and 19th's looking kind of shaky.
It's fine.
I'm looking right there.
Can people, I'm sorry, can people hit the 20th, Thursday, the 20th?
Hey, I don't have a problem.
Yes, okay. So it's the, the 4th and?
Yeah, I think I can make it work.
The 20th?
No, I wasn't, I was just gonna, I was just looking down at my, whether it took a motion or it's just a consensus of council.
I mean, the only other option would be to go the 4th and the 25th, right? Keep the 25th the same date. I mean, that's the only other option, huh?
I'm even fine with the 25th.
Was the 25th a problem?
There's a lot of staff that are not going to be here, including?
Well, yeah, and I think the reason why is because for schools, they're out that full week. In the old days, it used to be Thursday, Friday. Now it's the entire week. So for families, there are families that take that week and travel. So that's why I thought the 18th was attractive.
Right, yeah, or the 19th, or the 20th.
Sounds like the 20th works.
Does the 20th work for you, Councilmember Wilson? Okay, so the, let's, let's do the 4th and the 20th. At 7:00 p.m., yes.
Are we also going to discuss December or?
It's not, it's not on our agenda, so we can, we can talk about that in November. All right, so we're on to public comments. Please.
We have no speakers to this item.
Okay, we have staff communications.
Sorry, I wanted to quickly give staff kudos to Jaden and Jennifer in the back for the rollout of the new website. And you're getting update emails about the archival loads that are coming up incrementally through the webmaster, Jaden and Jennifer, and we want to thank them for that. The newsletter will be coming out this week or next. And I also wanted to thank the city attorney and his team for, you know, we noticed along with assistant city attorney and staff, Rakiya, that our contract backlog and has been absolutely cleared and streamlined and communication with, with different departments has completely changed. And so the city attorney's office being integrated within staff operations and departments has been made a noticeable difference on how we move our work forward. And I just wanted to give kudos to the city attorney and thank him for his diligence and growing his team, the patience in moving forward on that. And then I just wanted to really quickly, I, I was telling you all about this last time, that community engagement is now doing a dashboard. So I printed this out to show you all of the things and it will be, so the most recent month is on the top, following the last, you can see month over month that changes, and that's for building. So ADU permits issued, SFD permits issued, inspections completed, fees collected, also code enforcement, cases open, cases closed, inspections completed, citation fines collected. We also have planning. So the metrics, select applications under review and then long-range planning. So long-range planning has what, what's coming up for you all's consideration, including the general plan kickoff, the MTCT OC policy, the ADU accelerator, pre-approval plans and all that stuff and, you know, and asterisks for those. And then economic development, which is folded in, also has metrics at the bottom. So we're getting this updated as well each month. We wanted to, just at a glance, you can see what the department is. Your 90-day list from your last meeting was also updated and provided to you all and then? Oh, okay, yeah. And, and so please give us, you know, corrections if you see them because sometimes it wasn't always very clear, so we went through it a couple times, but we need your, your input. And then you also have, our PIO has worked with us to develop the departmental bimonthly report template. I was talking to Councilmember Fadis about this and I heard communication as one of the peripheral issues from the priority setting meeting. So we thought we would give you a bimonthly report template for each department that has key performance indicators, projects and initiatives, community engagement and public outreach, as well as upcoming events, important dates, challenges, needs, summary and key takeaways, infrastructure and maintenance, if it's public works, public safety and emergency management as applicable, and then policy grants and funding updates, as well as staffing and internal updates. So you'll be getting one of these across departments in a bimonthly report out package. And so everything else I will save for the next council meeting, but those were the highlights because they're right in front of you, so thank you so much.
Are, are these different dashboards and things you're going to be providing us? Are these things we could put on the city website that can also?
We can, yeah.
Let the public know as well?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, that, that looks like great information.
Jaden says yes.
Yeah, thank you, Jaden, for pulling that together. All right, council communication and future agenda items. Does anybody have anything? I was asked to mention that on the 21st, we have a joint City of Antioch Planning Commission General Plan Kickoff Meeting. So that's going to be at 6:00 p.m. at the Antioch Community Center. So just a heads up for everybody. And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
We have a motion, we have a second? Monica barely reached her button. All right, a motion, a second, please catch your votes.
We're good?
Did I not do it?
Do we have to do it again?
Thank you. All right, great job, everybody. Thank you. Well done. Well done.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn passes at 12:39 a.m.
Ever since Michael's been with us, these meetings go past midnight. I don't know what's going on. Oh, she is? Oh, my goodness.